It is now seven o'clock. We will call the February 7th, 2023 regular town council meeting to order. Joe, if you will lead us in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. We are starting out our evening with our state legislators. And we have two of them here this evening, Representative Mike D'Amico and Representative Rex Cooley. So, gentlemen, we can turn the floor over to you if you'd like to give us any information on legislature, what's going on these days, give us any updates.
Sure. Did you want me to start? Do you want to start?
Well, I'll concede to the more experienced representative.
Well, should Representative Cooley at least introduce himself because I'm not sure that he's well-known to everybody, so.
Sure.
All right. I'm Francis Rexford Cooley, and those that went to Farmington High some forty years ago would know me as Rex Cooley. I started using the Francis Rexford professionally because my father's Francis and I was publishing. I'm in my first term as state rep for the newly constructed 22nd District, which contains a portion of Farmington, south of Meadow Road essentially, to the Plainville line with some little carve-outs in there. I'm pleased to be representing Farmington where I'm alumni of Farmington High. And I'm on the Education, Higher Ed, and Environment Committees.
Great. Welcome.
Very good. Very good. So, yeah, so I won't, I'm Mike D'Amico. I think no need for big introductions here. So, like Representative Cooley, I serve on the Higher Education Committee, also on the Environment Committee, Public Health, and Energy and Technology. So, all important committees and all busy. So, I guess you want an update on what's happening in the legislature? You know, I don't pretend that this will be a complete update, but it's just some of the things I think you might be interested in. So, as you're probably aware, the governor will be giving his budget address to the legislature tomorrow afternoon. So, a lot more information will come out, you know, about what his proposal is. And I always preface this, you know, this presentation as well as any other presentations with, don't get too nervous at the beginning because it's only February and the legislative session ends in June. I believe it's June 7th this year, if I'm not mistaken. So, a lot will happen between now and June 7th. The governor will make his proposal, the legislature, the Appropriations Committee and the Finance Committee will make their proposals. And then, you know, then the dance begins. So, you know, I always tell people, you know, if you don't like what you see in the governor's budget or if you don't like what you see in the legislature's budget, stick around because it's going to change and hopefully it will change for the better. So anyhow, so as you're probably aware, one of the things that's, hey, Senator Lopes, all right. Again, should I let Senator Lopes say hello? Okay, I'll keep going. All right. Take a breath. Good idea. All right. So, you're probably aware that the governor is proposing an income tax cut that's going to, the goal is to give tax relief to middle-income, middle-class folks. And I don't know all the details, but I believe he's proposing an income tax cut. The 5% would be reduced down to 4.5%, and the people in the 3% state income tax bracket would see a reduction down to 2%. And it's going to be a significant savings for a lot of families. And, but, you know, to me, that's the highlight. That's the one thing that came out just the other day. And as I said, more details are going to come out in his budget address tomorrow. So, what is the legislature working on, you know, this year? I'm on the Energy Committee and we're looking at ways to make energy more affordable. Obviously, you know, that's a big concern. And also to move Connecticut in the direction of cleaner, sustainable sources of energy. The Housing Committee is looking at housing affordability. We have a serious shortage of affordable housing and throughout the state of Connecticut, and people are presenting various proposals to try to move forward and reduce that shortage. The Transportation Committee, I'm sure you're aware that Transportation Committee is looking at traffic safety. There have been far too many tragic incidents regarding highway safety and urban traffic safety. And obviously, the tragic death of one of our colleagues certainly, you know, got everyone's attention. But so many other incidents have happened over the last several years. They're looking at things like red light cameras in urban areas. They're looking at ways to go after distracted driving. I am not on transportation, so I won't say any more than that because I, are you on transportation? I'm going to let you handle that then. Okay. That's good. So, the Higher Education Committee is looking at college affordability, access to college, workforce development. You may have heard, and again, I think Representative Cooley talked about this in a little more detail, but the Education Committee, not the Higher Ed Committee, but the Education Committee is looking at making some changes to the way the education cost sharing funding goes to all the municipalities, ECS, which we're all familiar with. So, there's a bill, House Bill 5003, 5003, that's going to make some pretty significant changes, which I think will be to the benefit of Farmington as well as many other towns. But, you know, we'll talk about that later. The Aging Committee is looking into nursing home safety for residents as well as trying to deal with staffing shortages. We have some real severe staffing shortages in nursing homes, so they're looking at that. The Human Services Committee is going to do a large bill, I am told. It's Bill 5001 that's going to deal with providing more and better services for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And this has been a long time coming. And the leadership in both the House and the Senate is behind this. And we have the money. And now it's time to try to upgrade these services for people in the intellectual and developmental disability community. The GAE Committee, Government Administration and Elections, is looking at early voting. And I know that you guys will have some questions, I'm sure, about early voting and how that's going to affect Farmington and what's, you know, what's the cost going to be and, you know, how are we going to effectuate all this? So, that's something that's high on their agenda. The General Law Committee just had a hearing the other day about whether wine should be sold in grocery stores. And that's probably, I don't know if that's the biggest item on the agenda this year, but it's certainly going to be the most, one of the more interesting and talked about agenda items this year. So, we'll see how that works out. The Public Health Committee, which I am a member of, is going to be dealing with a bill once again this year having to do with aid in dying. Again, controversial but important. Scope of practice issues for the medical profession, trying to ameliorate the nursing shortage, the staffing shortage. And we'll also be dealing with legislation having to do with reproductive rights. And then finally, and then I'll be quiet for a while, the Environment Committee, which I am also a member of, is going to be dealing with bears, again, a topic that will get a lot of attention. Solid waste management, environmental justice, as well as dealing with trying to reduce plastics and polystyrene. And I think I've said enough, but that gives you an idea of the wide variety of issues that we deal with and that will get a lot of attention. So, enough from me.
Great. Senator Rick Lopes will join us.
Cooley, you good?
I'll concede that.
Age before beauty. I might be older than you, too. All right. So, as you know, Senator Rick Lopes represent the East Farms section of Farmington, all of New Britain, all of Berlin. And my plan worked like a charm to come in a couple of minutes late and let Mike explain everything that we've done or are planning to do this session. It is an interesting session in that very different over the last decade that I've been up there. Whereas the last decade was absolutely overwhelmed with lagging revenue, plummeting revenues, expenses, you know, having problems meeting our expenses, cuts everywhere, and then of course, the ending with the pandemic. These last couple of years have been the exact opposite with state finances doing very well, as you all know. Over $3 billion in the rainy day fund, various other running surpluses for the last couple of years in a row. We're actually making moves Thursday to potentially even allow us to expand the rainy day fund from 15% to 18%, which would probably add another half billion dollars to the rainy day fund because some actuary somewhere said, you know, $3 billion is good for a moderate recession, but you never know if you're going to have an extreme recession. So, have a little bit more money saved away. And I'm a big proponent of that. Before I get into this legislative work that Mike covered so well, I mean, the overall things that we do and the most important thing we do up in the legislature, of course, is pass a budget. The budget we pass filters its way down into all municipalities, gives you the money you need to run your towns effectively. And frankly, the last couple of years with these surpluses, we've been extremely disciplined on trying to pay down old debt. You know, it's not a mystery that, not for the last couple of years, but the last 70, 80 years, we have not adequately funded our pension funds. We have increased our indebtedness. And it hurt, you know, it got to a point where we were coming up with almost a billion dollars a year just to cover paying debt and then moving forward. For the last two, three years, we have now paid down what we're supposed to pay down towards our debt with the actuaries say we're supposed to pay plus an additional $7 billion. And that is going to free up an exceptional amount of money and make us more solvent and stable over the next 50 years. And if, and many of us want to keep on that path. We want to stay disciplined. We know we have money and surpluses. There's still a lot of need out there. A lot of industries that are looking for employees and are struggling because of that, from the healthcare to the retail, everywhere. There's all these sorts of problems and we want to free up some money to help some of these industries, especially the ones that were hurt badly during the pandemic. But at the same time, I want to stay disciplined. I want to continue to pay down extra debt and free up money and make us run in the black, as I like to say, for years to come. I think it'll only help us. We sat through a meeting last night and it was four or five hours long trying to explain how all these pieces come together in terms of paying down debt and our volatility caps and our revenue caps. It is kind of complex, especially for a lot of laypeople like myself who are not finance experts in the legislature. But the reality of it, that $7 billion we paid down extra frees up anywhere from $300 to $500 million a year in money we don't have to pay towards debt. And that is every year, every year going forward. That's money that we're going to get. And the more we pay down, obviously, the more we'll free up. So, this is, it's promising and I want to stick with it. I think that's, once again, our primary duty is to pass a budget. And then all the 3,000 bills that we raise, Rep Cooley's new, he's probably getting overwhelmed with the number of bills that we raise. Those are additional things. And my roles this year are a little bit new. I'm the Chair of the Environment Committee. Mike mentioned the bears. Honestly, bears are not our most important issue. They are important, but.
I think they get the most attention.
Absolutely. They take the air out of the room. Municipal leaders, you guys know we have a waste problem. We don't know what to do with our garbage. We're shipping it out of state. We hamstring ourselves by saying we don't want to build trash-to-energy plants. We don't want to use landfills. But we end up shipping our garbage out of state so that some other state can throw it into a landfill or put it in a waste energy plant. I don't see that as a really viable way to go going into the future. So, we're putting together a plan, a waste management plan to address both our short-term and long-term problems with waste. Vice Chair of Transportation Committee, for once, there's not any major singular bill in transportation, but there's a lot of stuff going on about traffic safety. I don't know if it was the pandemic or not, but we've all seen like, driving the last couple of years is not what it should be. People not obeying traffic rules, red lights, speeding, aggressive driving. And as someone who has always been kind of against red light cameras and against those automated speed traps, I'm starting to bend simply by observing what we're seeing on the roads lately that, and then the problems we're having with, you know, people driving irresponsibly. I'm on six or seven other committees, but that's the gist of what's important to me this year due to my assignments. And be happy to take any questions.
Great. I have just a couple of, add a couple of things. On the education funding, having gone through, we made your discussion, public hearings on that and discussion on that 5003. It looks like it's, you know, Farmington is not going to take any hit. It looks like Farmington Public Schools will benefit in the first two-year cycle. I can't, after that, I don't know, but it looks immediately that Farmington and Plainville and Southington, I represent all three towns, do well under it. So, that was always a big issue coming in. Environment Committee, we do have human composting as a potential. I bring that up because I actually worked on a screenplay that, dealt with it years ago. But that's one of the issues coming up for environment. So, there's a lot of working parts. And in terms of Farmington itself, the Farmington River, there is bill proposed dealing with the Colebrook Reservoir and the releasing of water during the summer. More of an issue upstream, but eventually that water would reach Farmington itself. So, that's something to be cognizant of, that the low releases by MDC, they're trying to get, DEEPs trying to get that more standardized and to benefit the upstream fishing during the summer season and less volatility. So, that's an issue and that, of course, has an impact on the Farmington watershed here in town. Hence, the name Farmington. So, I wanted to make the council aware of that. That's also in the hopper. How many of these things find fruition and reach the floor to be voted upon, we'll see. But I just wanted to add those three elements. One, because it's, you know, again, I worked on a screenplay, edited a screenplay dealing with it. It's got to be seven, eight years ago and now it's an issue before us and that's in the Environment Committee. I have a feeling that's probably not going to necessarily make it this year.
Ask the Chair.
Make the Chair.
We get the composting back and people put it into their gardens. My coach here made an off-color remark about Rick's special tomatoes. So, no, I don't want to make light of it. It's serious to some people. But we don't know where we're going with that bill. That has not been heard yet, so. Actually, it has been heard. Not a lot of testimony on it, believe it or not, but it's still got a long way to go.
I have a feeling it's an issue that will be, if not dealt with, this session will be coming up again and again and again.
We have a lot of those.
And given, you know, we have funeral homes here in town, that's something that the industry is going to have to deal with down the road because the movement has been gaining steam, if you will, for the last decade.
Great. I will now open up for questions from the council here. Who'd like to start off?
I could start off. Mine, Johnny, go ahead. Quick, not easy, but quick. No. So, I got a question on affordability. In my private life, I'm a home builder and also Chair of Codes and Standards. And we've seen a big push for electrification. We also saw in January 1, a doubling of the electrical supply rates. And I want to know what that balance is. And if I could just follow up on that. And a second thing, affordability in general. I've seen, I've had to raise my prices, the industry's raised their prices 20% on new construction in literally the last little over two years. And that doesn't even bring us to where we were. We've all been so nervous because we haven't seen any kind of growth since 2008. We are still considered the low-cost area of New York and Boston. And a lot of people fled here because of that with remote work and all that. So, how, what is the chatter at the state or what is, what are the bills coming up? What ideas do we have to balance that, you know, property values with affordability and some of these bills on electrification and then the cost of utilities in general? I know that's a loaded, big question, but if you guys can just elaborate if there's anything that the state is looking at. Because I think what a lot of people are most worried is about overreach or pushing too far, being too reactionary and not proactive. So, I'd be interested in hearing a little bit about that.
That's, I will say, that is a great question. It is on our minds nonstop. As you may or may not know, I've been the champion of a bill to restrict fossil fuel use in new construction and residences in Connecticut. And we had a bill last year on it. Home builders testified. I work with the Home Builders Association and their director quite a bit. And we talk often about how this affects the industry, may or may not affect the industry. They, as a group, are not necessarily against moving towards electrification. But like, exactly like you said, like, what is the balance? Can we, if we go too fast, are we going to put ourselves in trouble? And that's kind of one of the reasons why we let the bill pass, die last year. And even though it's been raised again this year, it's always been more of an indication of like, we want to push in that direction. But we work in the Environment Committee hand-in-hand with the Energy Committee about how do we move into that new age of HVAC especially without rushing into it and leaving ourselves with a grid that can't handle it or problems where you lose power in an area during the winter and you have all these homes without any means to heat themselves. These are serious questions and we are moving slowly, indeliberately in that direction. We know it's the way of the future, but you're right, absolutely cannot move there too quickly. We have to make sure the grid can handle it and have to make sure that the industry can handle it and it won't cause problems. I mean, there are, with the federal bills that have passed with the incentives towards heat pump technology, geothermal, they're now as affordable as putting in a natural gas or an oil HVAC system so that the prices have matched now. And people who are building homes are going to say, well, you know, if it's the same price, I'm going to go with the more efficient, more advanced technology. Not a lot of people out there saying, hey, give me an old oil burner, you know, at this point. But there's still a long way to go to understand exactly how quickly we move in that direction. So, I do appreciate that question.
Thank you. If I just follow up one, just, and I've been part of those discussions. I have a project that we were looking at all electric, and I'm still 50/50. I may do it. And this is not being, you know, pushed into it. This is looking at the numbers, looking at the marketplace. But with those rates, and that's why I specifically pointed at that, it's really made it tougher to make the numbers work. And it's not just, you know, if this is a rental product, someone moves in, they're not going to know until they get there. But at the end of the day, we're still stewards of the people we do business with and the clients that we have. So, on the affordability front, just in general, you know, we've seen supply-side issues. We've seen, but it's, I mean, that's been a good portion of it, but we also see it from a demand side. So, there's still, there's also talk, and I know in Farmington, Mike may know, but we passed a moratorium just to look at affordable housing and how to bring that into our regs. So, as affordability in general, is the state doing anything or is the legislature talking about any which way where, again, that we want our property values to be at a certain rate, but we also want it to be affordable? And what's that balance?
I don't know if you guys can share any on that, but that's a four-hour conversation you and I should probably have somewhere. We are, we do understand it and there is hesitant. That's why we don't want to go full bore into it. And, you know, little by little, I think the industry and the state will move in that direction regardless of what we do. But I think it's our job to steward how we move in that direction to make sure we don't run into any problems or try to mitigate. We're going to run into problems, but just mitigate them as much as possible. And good luck on that project because I think, I think in the long run, it'll be good. But you're right, if electric rates are shooting up, then it gets a little scary sometimes.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys, for coming to talk to us about all the fun stuff that's happening in the legislature. Looks like a packed schedule. So, I had two questions. And since we have two representatives on the Education Committee, this is kind of a specific question, but about HVAC. So, last year, maybe it was the year before, we were told that there was a bill that would, you know, grant funding available through pandemic resources, I guess, to take care of the HVAC systems in the lower elementary schools. And for some of you who don't know, all of our elementary schools, there's no air conditioning in them. And come May, it gets pretty, pretty like uncomfortable in there for the students, for the teachers, for everyone. So, we were told, was it last year or maybe the year before, that that was on the table and that we could apply for grant funding? And I know this is kind of a specific question, but has anybody actually looked at that? When you roll the grant funding out, instead of making it, you apply and you get funding, maybe have the towns maybe pay for it and then get reimbursed? Because, you know, if we're looking at a number of different school districts who all want to have HVAC systems put in and/or air conditioning, we're all going to market at the same time. We're all going to be bidding for these things. We're, I'm just thinking about how much of an increased cost that would be for all municipalities. So, I don't know where that is in the stage of, you know, is it still in committee? Have people talked about it? Is already a program that's been established? But just like, taking a step back, like how that money could be, like how much more efficient the process could be? If, for example, the municipalities were able to pay for the HVAC systems themselves and then get reimbursement through a grant funding?
I'm not an, I can try to answer.
Okay. I'm definitely not an expert, but I will tell you, and Rick can probably help me out here. I believe we had a pretty significant fund last year that you just referenced. I'm not sure what the status is. I'm not sure if it's completely depleted or if it's still going.
I thought it was going to be a reoccurring fund every year and municipalities would apply. And I thought last year we dispersed funding, but it's one of those things where even though it's a good-sized fund, there's a lot of schools in this state and it'll take a while to address all of them.
So, I mean, I'm intrigued by your idea, but I suspect that the reason that they set it up the way that they did is because if they make it a reimbursement, then it's kind of open-ended as opposed to a fund that has a set amount of money and when the money is gone, the money is gone. Whereas what you're proposing, if enough towns do the HVAC work and then give the bill to the state, you know, this could be more than we bargained for. Do I understand? Am I missing something here?
No, no, I just mean, it's like, it's been another year. Another set of students have gone through the lower elementary schools. Last year wasn't terrible, actually. There weren't that many weather-related closures, you know. I think it was maybe four years ago. The kids were at home, I think, like four days because it was like 98 degrees or something. And honestly, it's 98 degrees outside and it's probably about 104 inside. So.
I'm well aware. My kids went through the Farmington system. I know how hot it gets in those schools.
And this is a kid that, you know, didn't have air conditioning when they were growing up. So, I, but, you know, creature comforts, I get it. But these are little kids and they can't withstand that temperature. I don't think adults can either. But, I mean, it's just thinking about a program. If we were to apply for the program and then we're like, okay, it's another year that goes by and whatever the timeline is, it just seems like it would be more efficient to shorten that timeline and to be able to get the funding to the schools and get the work done and not have to battle everybody when, you know, everyone else is going out to bid. It's just a thought.
It's a great question and idea. I think it's a matter of scope. I don't remember what the fund was, but let's say it was $20 million. I think the, maybe more, but I think the request for to do all the schools statewide would be well over $1 billion. So, essentially, school systems apply to the fund and then it gets dispersed and exhausted. And the next year, we refill the fund and the next round of schools go and so on and so forth. It very may, well, may take years to address the situation in certain towns that way. I mean, there just isn't enough money. That's why I kind of meant in my earlier introduction on, you know, we have, we have a lot of surplus, but we're trying to be incredibly disciplined about not overspending.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we'll be talking about this again, I'm sure. But have we put in an application? I think we have put in an application for the HVAC system, right, Kathy?
Yes, the school system has, yes.
Have you heard anything back? Okay. We can, if you send me an email, we'll try to track it down, see what happens.
Okay. I have one other question. It's not going to be as long-winded, I promise. So, you've been here before and we've talked about electric car manufacturers, namely Tesla. And full disclosure, I own one. I have a lot of friends who own them. And I know, I just want you to kind of explain why there isn't a Tesla dealership in the state of Connecticut, please.
I know I parked right next to you, so.
All right.
As a proponent of electric cars and as someone who has owned one recently, I sold it this year after a couple of years. I loved it. I loved it. The issue is not that we ban Tesla from selling cars in Connecticut. It's that we have a structure and laws on how people have to sell cars in Connecticut. And Tesla doesn't want to abide by those laws. So, they came to us 10 years ago and said, we know you have a lot of laws on how you're supposed to sell a car in Connecticut. We don't want to follow those laws. We want to sell it our way. And we said, no. And then nine years ago, they did the same thing. Eight years ago, the same thing. Eight years ago, the same thing. To say that it's a company that's very stubborn is not, it's not an exaggeration. They hired more and more lobbyists, probably spent more money than it would have cost to do the one thing they needed to do in order to sell cars in Connecticut, which was open a dealership. So 10 years ago, more than that, 12 years ago when they started this, if they had opened one dealership anywhere in Connecticut, they could have sold cars, Teslas, in Connecticut. They just decided not to. And that was their business decision, and they put all their money into changing our laws to write a bill that, at the time, would only allow them, no other company, to sell their cars directly to people. Ford couldn't do it. Toyota couldn't do it. VW couldn't do it. Just Tesla. In the last couple of years, we tacked down a couple of other companies. Any company that only sold electric cars, no other types of cars, could directly sell cars to their, to consumers. But GM, Ford, Toyota could not. The idea that we even entertained a bill that gave a competitive advantage to one company in an industry over the other drove me crazy. And I opposed that bill every year, and we stopped that bill every year. And to this day, Tesla still doesn't want to open a dealership in Connecticut. They said, that's just not the way we do it. And we said, okay, but if you want to sell cars in Connecticut, you should follow our laws. If we had a surgeon that came to Connecticut and said, I don't really want to go to medical school because I have a magic scalpel. Can I just start doing surgeries? We'd probably say no, and say, I want you to go to medical school and get accredited before you start doing surgeries. We have rules and laws in place. And we've seen examples in other states that did allow Teslas to sell cars this way. And when there were problems with Teslas, they have issues in the way, the way they structured their contracts, people can't file a class action lawsuit against Tesla when there's a wide-ranging problem because of the way they sell cars. They don't have dealerships. And we're finding more and more problems with the Tesla model in other states, and they're having, now they're correcting it, correcting, correcting it. And not to say that our dealership model's perfect. There's, when I go buy cars, I get stressed out, too. But there are reasons why we have dealerships. It gives protections to consumers, places to go when there's problems with their cars. This is why. We've never, ever, ever said Tesla can't sell in Connecticut. We just said, if you want to sell here, you have to open a dealership. You and I have gone back and forth on this a little bit, but I hope that's a clear answer.
It is. So there's no negotiation, long and short of it is that we have our laws, they will not abide. Therefore, no dealership in Connecticut for a Tesla. Although-
I, I asked an unmentioned dealership owner who said, if Tesla came to me today and said, I'm going to partner with you and sell my cars in your dealership, he said, we'd be selling Teslas here tomorrow. It's that, that level of arrogance in that company.
Thank you.
Just, Ed, I believe that one of the reasons the dealership requirement is there is so that the consumer, if they have a problem, can take the car back. And in a lot of cases, warranties get voided if you have non-certified people working on them. So there's, there's a whole consumer protection element to the dealership component, the way it's written in Connecticut law.
Well, but Tesla does have a, it doesn't have a dealership, but it does have a, a shop here where you can take it, a repair shop. But I take your point.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming, gentlemen. I have been in this town forever. I drive Route 4 all the time, and I was totally unaware of our UConn Technology Incubator across from the campus. I don't know if the three of you are aware of it, have seen it, been inside of it. I had a great opportunity to go with our Farmington Economic Development Commission, do a tour of it, and just really learned about exciting life-saving research. There's a million dollars raised and researched every year. And when these tip companies outgrow this incubator space, for example, two of them, like, you know, moved into other facilities within town, so creating jobs, you know, bringing dollars in and stuff. So looking to see. Obviously, you know, sort of a little bit of a competition with New Haven. We're smaller. New Haven has a huge, huge campus over there. You guys in favor of, you know, bringing more funding to Farmington for this incubator project to allow it to continue to grow, to bring more research money in, to really, you know, bring our economic health in that one corridor even more viable than what it is today?
Absolutely. I mean, I even toured that facility about eight, seven, eight years ago, is the last time I was there. But UConn is at the forefront of a lot of our technologically-driven economic development. I mean, just this week, and I wish Senator Slapp was here, because it's something he's doing with UConn about the possibility of Connecticut becoming a leader at the main UConn campus and stores on hydrogen fuel for airplanes, and competitively being the place in all of New England, that, that development's going to go on and the job, job development that comes from that. But yeah, between Jackson Labs and the incubator space, they're doing some tremendous thing. And we're seeing the advantage in Farmington. I mean, young families, higher-income young families moving to Farmington because this is where the tech jobs are, that people come from out of state to, to track down.
So the short answer is yes. For me anyhow, yeah, yes. You know, UConn is, is obviously, you know, they're very well-represented, you know, at the Capitol, and very well-favored. And they, they usually make out pretty well when they make requests of the legislators. So yeah, I'm all in favor of, of increasing and growing the, the, the technology incubator program. And I, I did get a tour also when, when it was in its infancy, and you could see that it was, it was going to lead to bigger and better things than it has. So, and the other thing that I should point out is, speaking of Senator Slapp, he wanted me to convey his regrets. He had a previous commitment, and I kind of miss the fact that he's not here, but we'll, we'll catch him next time.
I toured Jackson Labs yesterday with a group of representatives. They made presentations. So I think that the relationship, UConn biomedical innovations at the Farmington Campus and Jackson Labs, has been very successful, and I would like to see it continue. And as, growing up in Farmington years ago, it's amazing how much economic development for the town has been created by the sighting of the UConn Medical Center. If you can go back and remember what it was like when that was opened in the 70s, and you think back to, like, 76, the bicentennial, and how much economic development has expanded out on Route 4 to the entrance onto 84. Over the last 40-plus years, it's been pretty amazing, and I would expect, I would do everything as a representative to continue that success, because it's been incredibly beneficial to Farmington and its tax base over the years.
Thank you.
And this way. Keith, go on.
Sure. Thank you for coming, guys. Full disclosure, some of these are, I cheated on my homework, and I asked a few of our residents if they had any questions to ask. So I have, one of which is from Roja Afshar, who's joining us today and had a question about Sunday hunting, and wanted to know if the Environmental Committee had plans to do a public hearing on Sunday hunt, hunting sometime in the near future.
Oh, they're all going to look at me, huh? Yeah, the short answer, like, Mike, yes, we're going to have a hearing on Sunday hunting and bear hunting.
Okay. Has that-
I don't believe it's been scheduled yet.
Not been scheduled yet, but you expect-
It'll be soon.
Okay, cool.
And I just want to say hi to Roja. Thank you for bringing that up, and we've talked about this before. And I've been on the Environment Committee for several years, and this, this has come up in previous years. And I believe that the sentiment has generally been that, that among members of the committee, I, I can't speak for the whole legislature, but certainly in, in the committee, that the, the general sentiment has been that Sunday is a day of rest. It's a family day, and it's, it's the one day that families ought to be able to, you know, go out into the woods and, 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 you know, with kids, and, and, and to have Sunday hunting would, those two things just, you know, there's too much potential for, for accidents and, 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 you know, bad things to happen. So, so that's, that, that's really the, the, the big impediment, I think, to, is that the sentiment is that Sunday should be a, a, a family day. So now, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm, I'm new there. Even though I'm the chair, I'm fairly new to the committee. I'm going to take a more open, a very open-minded look at this. I mean, our job is to listen to people, represent the constituents. So that's why we have hearings. And that's why, even though it's a bill, many people, Mike and others on the committee, don't support, I still said, yes, we're going to have a hearing. People will have their, their say, and we will deliberate and listen to them carefully.
Yeah, I think the general sentiment, I'm not a hunter, I'm, but I think the sentiment I've heard from other people was the difference between Saturday and Sunday. I mean, I, I understand your explanation about the state for families who are out, but I, I know I'm out, I was out in the woods with the Boy Scouts on a Saturday two weekends ago when we went out on night. So I think the people that are in favor would, would quibble with the difference between Saturday and Sunday. And then, so, and then bear hunting, does that look like something's going to happen?
Like I said, we're going to hear both of them. And it is, interest, both are interesting topics. They're, they're not bipartisan, they're cross-party kind of issues. I mean, there's people in both parties who want to hunt on Sunday, and people don't want to hunt in both parties. Same thing for the bear hunting. So it is very interesting, nonpartisan issues, and it's based on other people's, their viewpoints on life. And we're going to hear what people got to say, and then we're going to try to make a decision. I think we are going to try to do something on bears, some sort of bear mitigation, because that is a pressing issue. But we'll see where the rest end up.
Sure. Okay, so I have a couple of early voting questions. Do we think that will be implemented in Connecticut for the municipal elections coming up this year? I think we'll have expanded early voting.
My, my understanding is that the, the GAE Committee, Government Administration and Elections, that, that is their goal, is to, is to have early voting implemented in Connecticut this year, kind of as a test run for the following year, which is a presidential election year, as everybody's aware. So, so hopefully we'll get it, again, I'm not saying that it will happen, but I think that's their goal, is to try to get it up and running for, for this coming November.
And then, state is planning to provide financial support to the towns for implementation?
I hope so.
It'd seem like we should.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and I like the idea of, we should do it in this municipal election, because municipal-
Yeah, make us the guinea pigs, yeah.
Municipal elections by far have lower turnout than presidential elections, and it's almost like a dry run, you know, to try to get the kinks out.
Sure. This is the last year, six years ago, I think, is when it came up, the, the big push for an increase in minimum wage in Connecticut. I think this is last year. It's going to be at 15 very soon. Is there talk of a push to continue to bump that forward as we go, or is there going to be some cool-off time?
No, it's, two components of raising it to $15 an hour. We raise it on a scale to $15 an hour and tied it to an escalator. And don't ask me to recite exactly which escalator we used, but it's a moderate one. It's not the, not the cost of living. It's the one that's slightly smaller. Usually comes out slightly smaller. So every year, the minimum wage after it hits $15 an hour will increase by that economic escalator.
Okay.
It'll be cents every year, a couple cents.
No, I'm, I'm going to add to that, only because my, my recollection is not tremendous on this, but I, I do recall that in addition to the escalator that Senator Lopes just referred to, there's also a provision that, that it, that I, I think by vote of the legislature, that, that, depending on, if we have, go into an economic downturn, a severe economic downturn, that we can, we can delay that, or, 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 you know, I don't know what the right word is.
Pause it.
Pause it for a while. Do you remember that?
Not at all.
You don't remember that? Okay. Maybe I have a faulty recollection.
You just knew the word.
No, I would go with Mike.
Maybe, no, it's possible that was a proposal, but I, I thought that made that into the final bill, but that's worth, that's worth looking at.
Very possible. I just, I don't have it.
Two more, but they're probably short, because I think, well, we'll see. Mike, you mentioned the, the planned income tax relief that the governor's going to talk about at, in his speech tomorrow. What's the, is there, how is the plan, how is this, what's the plan for making up the difference of that money? Like, where, you know what I'm saying? So if we're going to cut, cut those taxes, and the state's still obviously in need of revenue, where's, where's the idea that we're getting the other revenue?
Well, go ahead. I'm going to let you take this. I'll jump in. I'm, I'm much more blunt than Mike, and it hurts me sometimes. I'm trying to say this as polite as I can towards our, our governor here, but the legislature writes the budget, not the governor. So this is the governor's proposal.
Yeah.
He's going to set a flag in his ground and say, this is where I think we should be. And on certain levels, and not in a mean way, just, we find that, we look at it, thank you, we throw it away, and then we write a budget. And it's going to take us the next couple of months to write this budget and determine, are we going to do a tax cut? How big? What target audiences should get the cuts, et cetera, et cetera. We will take everything the governor says into consideration. He's the governor. He gets that respect. But we will write a budget that makes sense. Then obviously, if there's costs, the surpluses that we've been seeing, we're seeing a surplus this year, I imagine parts of that will be coming out of our surplus budget.
Okay. I will, I'll see the floor.
Thanks, Keith.
Ed.
I thank all of you for taking the time to come here and give us an update on legislative priorities and the state budget. Very much appreciated. I just have two questions for you. So we heard about the ECS funding, so that's great to hear that our funding should be good and potentially a little bit more than what we received last year. That's great news to hear. I wanted to ask about our pilot funds. So last year, we were fortunate enough to receive a substantial increase in pilot funds, about $1.5 million, which was very helpful during the budget process for the town last year. And I'm wondering, could you give your thoughts on, should we expect around the same level of funding this year, or what does that look like this year?
Jump in. And for the audience, pilot is payment in lieu of taxes, as you know in the public. It's essentially properties owned by the state which aren't taxed by the municipality. The state gives the municipality what they're missing in terms of what they could be collecting from those taxes. Unfortunately for the municipalities, it's not the full amount. And so every year, we argue on what the pilot rate is. And for many years, especially during the economic downturns, that rate got smaller and smaller and smaller. Last couple of years, we did a strong effort to try to increase, we did increase that rate, which was a windfall for municipalities, because essentially, it's found money. It's not tied to anything. You have a lot of flexibility on it. If it was up to me, we'd get that pilot back up to 100%. I represent towns that have, including Farmington, that have a lot of state property, and it would be awful nice to get some of that money we, we should be getting in terms of property tax income. I would say to, you know, my gut instinct would be, expect what you got last year. Let's hope we get a little bit more. And we're still, a bunch of us are still fighting hard to try to increase that pilot percentage every single year.
Great. Thank you very much, and glad to hear you're a strong proponent of the pilot funding. My other question is the construction on 84, kind of between Farmington and Hartford. A lot of us commute to the city. Just wondering if you know when, when that construction is anticipated to be completed?
Probably when we're gone. Let's hope soon. I, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
It does seem like it's endless.
I'm sure it's going to be great when it's done.
It's starting to look better already.
Helping with safety and traffic flow and all of that. And yeah, and it's starting already. So, yeah, definitely looking forward to that. Thank you.
Ryan.
Right.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming down to talk with us, and thank you for everything you do for the state and for us as a town. We really appreciate what you've done for us over the last couple of years, and what I know you're going to do for us in the future. And that's why we're here. I've been asked to ask you guys one question, and that is, can you talk a little bit about defending the Connecticut law aimed at taking guns from domestic violence abusers? I know that's in the news. Is that something that you guys will be addressing?
To be honest, I'm not very familiar with that law. I'm not on that committee rep county.
I, I believe that's going to be under the auspices of the Attorney General. That's going to be defended in court. So that would be the Attorney General's providence to deal with that.
Very good. That was just a question that someone had asked, so I wanted to pass that along to you. The other question I have is really a little more pertinent to Farmington, and that is, in all the bills I know you guys have reviewed, you've, you've mentioned a number of them here, like the Bears, the Solid Waste, the River Flow, which I found interesting, things that affect Farmington, education as well, because you mentioned that. What are the bills that you've seen that might have an impact on Farmington, maybe in a positive way, a potential positive way, or others in a potential negative way that we should be keeping an eye on as a town, and that I know you will be keeping an eye on for us?
It's a tough one. I mean, virtually every bill. I mean, a lot, any bill that affects every, the state statewide. But, but I would say, you know, back to what I originally started with, our fiscal discipline for the future is, I think, still think the most important thing we do up there. And, you know, being, being a product of the, like, 10 years in the legislature when we had no money- the legislature when we had no money, it was not the best job in the world. It was horrible. All we made, all we did was make decisions, which great programs were going to be cut, and how do we raise taxes to make up the difference. It was a really tough time, and, you know, give credit to the leadership and the governor at that time, I mean, they made very tough decisions. But now that we are seeing surpluses from that discipline, I wanna make sure we, we stay the course and, and make sure we have a booming economy until I retire. Then someone else can worry about it.
Excellent. One other follow-up, and that is, we've talked about potential tax cuts for, for the state. Are there any additional potential tax cuts for seniors who are living on fixed incomes? And there have been some questions in town about keeping costs and expenses down for seniors who are on fixed incomes in tough situations where rents keep getting raised on them.
How do you?
So, I'll, I'll just give you one example of legislation that addresses that partially. So you, you're probably aware that the last couple of years, we have been slowly phasing out the income tax, the state income tax on pension income and social security income for people within certain income parameters. And, and I know, I, I've received several inquiries about this, why was there a disparity between the income of a couple versus a single person? You know, it seemed like the, the way, the way it was structured, the, the couple would get punished, punished is probably not the right word, the, the couple that was married didn't get as much of a benefit or an advantage as a result of this phasing out of the tax. So, so a bill was introduced, and several, several House members signed on to this bill as co-sponsors, I was one of them. It's House, House Bill 5052, 5-0-5-2, and it, it aims to correct that, that disparity, so that, so that there'll be more, more equality between those two groups, the, the single senior and, and the couple, as far as what kind of a break they get on their, on their taxes. So look out for that bill, 5052, it's gonna try to fix that disparity.
Thank you, that's what I was looking for. Thank you very much, all of you.
Great, thank you. I appreciate a lot of the comments you've made, I appreciate you coming in tonight, particularly the, really looking after the dollars of the state and trying to use that money wisely. You know, paying down the debt is fantastic, you know, putting into the pension what needs to be put in each year is great. I know there's still a long way to catch up, so it's actually fully funded, but putting in is a great start, because it's been years since we've been doing that. Also, you might wanna look into the unemployment fund, because we have borrowed significantly from the federal government. And every business in this state, even if you have a zero experience on unemployment, you have to pay down that debt, even if you're not using it. So a few things to look at. On a more personal and local level here in Farmington, we, like many other states, have just gone through our revale process for a number of reasons. Statewide, we've seen residential properties rise significantly while commercial properties dropped. Since we are mandated by state to do this revale every five years, and by the luck of the draw, we hit it about the worst possible time you could do a revale, all of those municipalities and cities who are going through that are gonna have a massive hole in their budgets, because you're gonna have this massive shifting to the residents. Is there anything you're considering to try and help out any of the towns that are gonna be suffering through a huge cost of revale that is shifting from commercial to residential?
It's a tough one. Um, this doesn't help, doesn't help you much. There were some towns last year that asked for a delay, with the idea that we're in a bubble, and prices will probably come down next year or the year after, and if you delay, you'll cap off the top of that bubble. Doesn't do you much good now. If we're all still around in five years and we're at the same situation, try to, try to remember it. There is nothing specific to it right now, but once again, we're just at the very beginning of the budget writing process. And my town, 40% increase across the board on evaluations, multifamilies at 100% increase. Some, I saw some three-family houses at 120% increase of value. Everyone's just holding their breath, waiting to see exactly where that comes out. So, no, we, we're aware of it, see if we can work something out.
Okay, I appreciate it. Even, you know, when you're looking at the pilot funds, when you're looking at the, whatever funds are coming to the municipalities, if you keep that in mind while you're having those discussions, because it's not just us, we just, you know, we're getting it this year in a big way, so I appreciate that. Any other questions for our representatives? I know you'd love to stay and listen to our entire evening, but on the off chance you have other things to do and have to leave, I appreciate your coming in, as we do every year when you show up. Thank you for the updates, thank you for your time and your answers, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will be moving on to Item D, Public Hearing.
Maureen, I think you read the public hearing notice.
No problem.
Illegal notice, I don't know if I'm on, Town of Farmington Public Hearing. A public hearing will be held on Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, at 7:05 PM in the Town Council, Town Hall Council Chambers, to amend the Farmington Town Code, Chapter 111, Historic Areas, for the purpose of adding two historic properties under the jurisdiction of the Farmington Historic District Commission, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 20th day of January 2023. Kathleen A. Blonsky, Town Manager.
And Derek is our Assistant Town, Garrett, did I say Derek? Garrett is our Assistant Town Planner. Don't, welcome.
All right, good evening, everyone. As Kathy stated, my name is Garrett Daigle, I'm your Assistant Town Planner. And tonight, we're gonna be discussing an amendment to the Historic District Ordinance to include two new properties that wanted to be added to the Farmington Historic District. And there's a public hearing required, as it's an amendment to the ordinance. Just a little background on how we got to this evening's meeting. First, the Town Council, I'm sorry, first, the Town Council appoints a study committee, the committee prepares a report and submits it to other relevant agencies, including the Chair of the Town Council, the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, and the State Historic Preservation Office. The State Historic Preservation Office submits comments. The committee did receive a positive referral from the State Historic Preservation Office on December 7th. The committee then holds a public hearing, which was held on December 20th, 2022. Both homeowners attended and participated in the public hearing, and were made aware that they would then have 30 days to withdraw from the process if they so choose. The final step is amending the Historic District map, proposed Town Ordinance revision, and submitting that to the Town Council for review and adoption. The property owners were notified of this evening's public hearing. If they wished to attend, I don't believe they attended this evening. First, this is the map of the Farmington Historic District, and I'll just zoom in really quick. These are the two properties that we're looking to add on Waterville Road. The two properties are 11 Waterville Road and 26 Waterville Road. Just some background, both these homes, along with many other homes on Waterville Road, were constructed by Noah Wallace. Wallace was a founding member of the Farmington Country Club and built many homes in the colonial Revile style in Farmington, leading to the curated look. Again, the first home is 11 Waterville Road, The Elms. The current owners are Jennifer and Jared Proto. The home was built in 1905 in the colonial Revile style and is located on the western side of Waterville Road. The second home is 26 Waterville Road, the current owner is Beatrice Stockwell. The home was constructed in 1917 in the colonial Revile style, and is located on the eastern side of Waterville Road, adjacent to the Farmington Country Club Golf Course. The items for review this evening to be amended is Section 111, Article 1, Historic District, Historic Properties, and to amend Exhibit A and B. A is the list of homes, and B is the map. I'm just going to jump down to the section that will be amended. This is the section of the Town Ordinance that will be revised to reflect the addition of the two homes, with the date of the public hearing and the effective date, should the council choose to approve the amendment. And lastly, Exhibit A, the two properties will be added out at the bottom, and then Exhibit B is the map, which I showed earlier in the presentation, that will include the two homes on Waterville Road. Any questions?
Okay, first, we'll see if there are any questions from the public at all. Devin, anyone with their hand up?
Seeing no hands online, but we'll give it another moment. I think we're all set.
Okay. If anyone has any questions directly?
I have, I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Someone's, this, this is sort of not pertinent, it sort of does. Someone's on the Historic District, I know that, so they have 30 days to withdraw their application from being added at this point. If someone's currently on the Historic District, is there any way for them to be removed from that, or are you locked in?
There is. It is essentially the same process as adding a home, including review by the State Historic Preservation Office, amendment by the Town Council, and approval by the Farmington Historic Study Committee that would then be formed to, to remove them from the property. It's, it's a difficult process.
Okay. So if somebody interested doing that, should contact you?
Yes.
Okay. That's it.
Any other questions?
No questions.
I just do have a curiosity question. I noticed the Farmington Historic Society's property, One Mountain Spring Road, is it true that that's not in the Historic District?
Apparently not.
Oh.
At the same time.
Okay, just seemed interesting. Okay, I don't think we have any other questions.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Item E, New Items. I believe we have none. Now we go to F, Public Comment. We will start out with any of the public who is here in person. If you would please state your name and address before making any comments. After that, we will go to those people online. Is anyone here in person who would like to make a public comment? Seeing none. Devin, do we have any hands up?
We do have one hand, Tim Kelly.
Tim, you are on.
Hello, this is Tim Kelly, 62 Westview. Can you folks hear me all right?
We can hear you.
Great. I understand today we have around 20 million, or maybe more, in our current general fund balance, that being the local Farmington Randy Day Fund. I, I know by law the state is only allowed to carry a balance up to 15% of the annual operating budget. Here in Farmington, we are well above that level, and by any accounting, have more than enough for a rainy day here in town. These funds have, of course, been accumulated largely through our local taxes paid. I know that we have a town budgeting process for maintaining a number of distinct funds, or quote savings accounts, to provide for future expected needs, be they potential large projects, server technology upgrades, phone systems down the road, maybe even police car replacements, et cetera. I believe we should establish a mill rate stabilization fund, separate and distinct from the general fund balance. Other neighboring municipalities have done so to avoid unusual tax bumps and control the tax burden on residents. This provides the opportunity to equitably assist all homeowners when utilized. Now, for any taxpayer in town, the financial effect of 8.3% inflation over the course of a year is equivalent to losing one month of pay or income. Thus, since we are in a more than fully funded position, let's create a simple vehicle to give ourselves the flexibility going forward. And the council can exercise this option without feeling like we are violating the integrity of our general fund balance. Something tells me that we, we're gonna need it in the future. Now, new assessments went out just before the holidays, and I think people have sobered up in town and figured out what that might mean. With residential values being raised so much more than commercial, the annual tax burden now slides right to land more heavily on the homeowners. And since we now have to apparently do reassessments every four years, as opposed to five years, there's no guarantee we won't have another tax burden shift onto the, onto the homeowners in three and a half years. So this has to be a key consideration as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tim, appreciate the thoughts. Other public comments?
Seeing no other hands.
Going once, going twice, no other hands?
All set.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Moving on to Item G.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the reading of the minutes of January 10th, 2023, the regular Town Council meeting.
Second.
Motion to second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of January 24th, 2023, regular Town Council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Moving on to Item H, Communications and Written Appeals. Do we have any?
Oh, no.
No written appeals. Okay, we'll move on to Report of the Committees, 1928 Building Committee.
Yes, we met earlier today. We are establishing a little ad hoc committee for a general valuation to really start looking at numbers. Obviously, we talked about numbers at our last meeting. So now, this next committee will now go in there, look at the numbers we presented for the budget, and see how we can stream, try even more to scale down the overall cost. We have a newsletter that will be coming out in the next couple of weeks. We're updating our website with that newsletter also, which will show schematics, answer questions that have been asked by the public, as far as why do we do it, why do we need to do it now, general costs, and things like that. And we have another meeting coming up in two more weeks.
Great, thank you. Farmington High School Building Committee.
So it's exciting to see steel being erected. If anybody's driven up lately, I know the fence is, is blocking off most of the site work, but you could see above it with the steel. The concrete's pretty much concluded in the A and B areas, which are the two classroom pods, and it will be soon completed in the C area, which is the, the shop area. We signed our first change order for a credit of $193,000. I was told not to expect that going forward, but, you know, why not start off strong? Our next meeting is Wednesday, February 15th, at 5 o'clock, in FHS Library.
We'd like to hear those credits, so thank you. Green Efforts Committee.
Our meet, our next meeting is tomorrow, February 8th, at 7 o'clock, via Zoom. Big thing that we're gonna be talking about is the Town Cleanup Day. Tomorrow, we should be setting the actual date, which will correlate with the Hazardous Waste Day.
Great, thank you. Land Acquisition Committee.
Nothing new to report.
Okay, Racial Equality Task Force.
It's the same.
Nothing to report, okay. Moving on to Reports to the Account Chair and Liaison, starting out with the Chair. Just our overview, tonight, we're gonna begin our budget discussions as we do every year. The schedule of the workshops will be posted on the town website, so please take a look. We have a long history here of being fiscally conservative, which has resulted in our mill rate being the lowest in the Farmington Valley. This year is a revale year, as you just heard with one of the public comments and in earlier statements. The process is required by state law to be done every five years. Unfortunately, our revale fell at a slightly inopportune time, as far as property values, home values went up significantly while commercial values declined. So this will result in a significant shift in our tax base, and we'll be discussing that later in the meeting. So the challenges that are facing this council are trying to limit what our tax impact is gonna be to our residents, while also continuing to keep the town services and the excellent schools that most people came to this town for. So you'll be watching us working through those challenges over the next month or so, and I appreciate and look forward to the comments that we'll be hearing from the public during this. Wanted to just again thank the legislators for coming in today. It's always nice to hear what's going on and have the opportunity to tell them what is important to the town of Farmington, and hear their responses to that, and just kind of get ahead of their session somewhat, so we can be heard a little more. And also, if you'll take a look at the town site, we have a tab on the front page which is called Jobs and Volunteer Opportunities. It is just that. If we have any openings on boards, committees, and commissions, as well as job openings, they will be listed on that tab. So if you have an interest in that, please take a look. And just my final note for this report, we are meeting today on February 7th, so we will not be meeting on the 14th. So I hope everyone can have a nice Valentine's Day on the 14th. That being said, we're going to move on to item two, Conservation and Inland Wetlands.
The Conservation and Inland Wetlands Committee is met on January 18th. The Conservation Committee is working on a date for household hazardous waste collection, and we'll be publicizing that shortly. Inland Wetlands voted to accept the application for construction of a gas station and convenience store at 368 Plainville Avenue. They were also going to meet with a property owner or the property owner at 9 Apple Tree to discuss stabilization of disturbed areas.
All right, thank you. Board of Education Liaison.
The Board of Ed has been busy at work. They had their budget workshop on Saturday where they passed a budget with a 2.99% increase over last year that will come before town council very shortly. They also had a regular meeting last night to cover, excuse me, non-budget related business and appointed Seamus Cullen, sorry, Cullenan as Director of Special Services. They also approved amending regulations on how holidays are discussed and added to the school calendar going forward after community feedback.
Great, thank you, and welcome Seamus. Bicycle and Trails Advisory Committee. The Bicycle Advisory Committee has been active, talking to our legislators. They are supporting the Vision Zero Bill, which among other things is trying to include an educational component to the driver's license, which is educating drivers as far as what they should be doing with bikes, for instance, giving them three feet to pass. So trying to get the drivers as well as the bicyclists to understand the rules there. They're also talking about trying to approve what's called the Idaho Stop, which is something when you're on a bicycle that you don't necessarily have to come to a full stop at an intersection if there are no vehicles coming in any other direction. It doesn't mean you can blow through an intersection, but if there is no one there, you can go through. Anyway, they've, they had a good time speaking to the assembly. They got their information out, and that is what we have from the Bicycle and Trails Advisory Committee. Economic Development.
Thank you, CJ. The EDC will be hosting a business breakfast event on March 1st from 7:45 a.m. through 9:30 a.m., and it's going to be hosted at the Farmington Polo Club. The keynote speaker will be Mr. Stephen Sullivan, President of Connecticut Electric Operations. Mr. Sullivan oversees the everyday work that powers homes and businesses across the state, manages storm response efforts, and leads a dedicated team that's committed to meeting the needs of EverSource's Connecticut customers and communities. And the next Economic Development Commission meeting is scheduled for tomorrow at 5:30.
Great, thank you. Farmington Historic District Commission.
Thank you. There was one, there was one motion made, and that was for a railing for a walkway at Ms. Porter's for safety reasons, which was approved. Also, the February meeting has been canceled, so our next meeting will be held on March 21st here in Chambers.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Housing Authority.
Nothing to report.
Human Relations Commission.
The Human Relations Commission met on Wednesday, January 25th. They acknowledged the Racial Equity Task Force as a recipient of the Third Human Rights Day Award, and Chair Christopher Cloud attended and accepted the award. They also had a discussion about potentially collaborating with the task force on a diversity event modeled after the Farmington Unity Network, and they established a subcommittee that will meet and report back at their next meeting in March.
Excellent, thank you. Library Board.
Nothing to report. Library Board meets next February 15th.
And the friends of library are having a book collection, which is not the library itself, but the friends are doing a book collection right now, and you can drop them off at the library. Town Planning and Zoning Liaison.
Nothing to report there either, and their next meeting is next Monday, the 13th.
Unionville Historic District Commission.
Yes, thank you, CJ. The commission is, so the commission met on February 2nd, and they're currently discussing and looking into an app that specializes in GPS assisted tours. So the app allows you to have pictures and information and even audio sounds loaded into it for different locations across the tour. And they'll be using a free version of the app this year and incorporating that technology into the walking tour that they plan for later this year. And the next meeting is scheduled for March 2nd at 7:00 p.m.
Great, thank you. Union Village Improvement Association.
Nothing new to report.
Okay. What are pollution control?
Everything is going well. Our next meeting is tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m.
Great, thank you. Any other liaisons? Seeing none. Move on to item K, the report of the town manager.
You have the report in front of you. Again, I've been handing out the budget schedule every month, but here is your budget schedule. The next item is going to be our next February meeting where we're going to be doing the capital budget. That's going to be with the Board of Education and my department heads. Just for a note, that does start at 6:00 p.m. here in the town council chambers. And then in March, we start with the public hearings on the budget, so that is attached to your packets. And then we also have the quarterly reports, so I'm not sure if you have any questions, but I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
So everyone had a chance to look through the quarterly reports? Any questions on any items in there? Other than there's a lot that has been gotten done this quarter, so thank you for that.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the town manager's town council budget report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the town manager's report. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item L4. I'd like to make a motion that Ms. Shay Sabir be appointed to the Green Efforts Commission beginning immediately for an indefinite term.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
I'd like to make, uh, let me back up for a second. I'd like to make a motion, L6, to appoint Bruce Polsky to the Retirement Board.
Second.
We have Bruce, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
I'll tell you a little bit about Bruce, if I may.
Absolutely.
Bruce is retired, he's well-traveled, and he's looking to give back to our community. He has a wealth of experience in financial services, retirement systems, and insurance, and he'll be a great fit on this board.
Great, and he was with us earlier tonight.
And he was with us, yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item L7. I'd like to make a motion that Ms. Kelly Shadler be appointed to the Unionville Historic District and Properties Commission as an alternate member for the balance of a three-year term beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item L8. I'd like to make a motion that Ms. Rachel Griffin be appointed to the Unionville Historic District Properties Commission as an alternate member for a three-year term beginning October 1st, 2022, and enders September 30th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item L9. Make a motion that Kathy Blonsky be appointed to the Farmington Valley Health District for a three-year term beginning immediately, ending December 31st, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
What do we know about this person?
That was my question.
Can we extend that through 2030?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. All right. Moving on to old business, item M. None. And new business, item one.
Agenda item N1. I'd like to make a motion to amend the Farmington Town Code, Chapter 111, Historic Areas for the purpose of adding two historic properties on the jurisdiction of the Farmington Historic District Commission per the attached study report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Kathy.
So you had the public hearing tonight, and this is just to amend the, and add the two historic properties.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the historic properties? Okay, both on Whitterville Road, right across the street from each other. Seeing no other questions or comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. N2.
I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing on March 14th, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the town manager's fiscal year 2023-2024 recommended budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Kathy.
Just to start the kickoff the budget process, we have the public hearing on my recommended budget on 14th. That's on Tuesday night, and then we'll be going the rest of the week for our budget workshops.
Okay. Here is where we start discussions on.
All in favor.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda item N3.
There we go.
I'd like to make a motion to set budget targets for 2023-2024 fiscal year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
So, just some background information. You have the adopted budget history from '95-'96 to '22-'23. We also put together expenditure averages. We've done some tax rate history and then the grand list. And so a couple of things. In the past, the town council has set budget targets for the town manager and for the Board of Education. At times, the town council has set an expenditure target. At other times, an overall tax rate was given. For most years, the town council has set a target range, not a specific number. In the past, the town council has provided some general policy direction regarding the budget. All information unfortunately needed to compile this budget is not available at that time. For example, revenues and state aid are not available, and it should be noted that this year, as we've talked about, is a revaluation year, making comparisons and the entire budget more complicated. In creating this budget, my budget, there are several factors that I review as we start the budget season. First, I look to fund accounts at levels that will enable service levels to remain at high standards. Second, I review the entire budget for cost-saving measures, and lastly, I review the potential budget drivers. Below is the information that I, that I thought may be helpful to the council as they review possible targets. The first thing is that the grand list is complete. We are, town staff has been analyzing the impact, but the data does show that there's a large shift from commercial to residential, which historically means that there's a large tax burden on the residents. And we do have more information about that, and I'll be turning that over to Joe as we go through the process. The cost of living is 6.5% as of December 2023. Collective bargaining contracts are settled, and the COLA range is between 2.5 and 4%. It's really still a very, very tight job market, hard to get employees, and definitely it's, it's difficult, especially at the higher level positions. And the cost of natural gas and electricity are projected to increase 27% to 38% respectively. We have been analyzing that a little bit, and potentially we are maybe not as high as that, but these are difficult, these are difficult drivers for us, for the budget. No question about it. No question about it. So I'm about halfway through with the budget process. We're putting it together right now. You know, it's historically on the expenditure side, if you look at the town side of the budget, it takes about 3% to keep things as the way that they are. And, you know, we can go a little bit lower, we can go a little bit higher, and, but really, that's pretty much where we have been. That would be with really no new employees and things like that. I'm concerned that that number, with these types of, with inflation and things like that, striving to that number may not keep the services exactly the same, exactly the same. It's just the realities of our utility bills are, you know, very, very expensive, as everyone has that, and that's a driver in our budget. Our personnel costs are higher. So that is, you know, I think the realities of where we stand is that it would be, you know, difficult to go in, you know, keeping things exactly the same at the same target that we usually have had. To compound things, we obviously had a revale, and there's been a very large shift to the residential taxpayer, and we're going to definitely see that, and Joe is going to just talk a little bit about that. But the numbers don't look positive. I mean, it's positive because the values have gone up, but the shift has definitely occurred. So, Joe, why don't you talk a little bit about where we are with the revale, and then we can go from there, CJ?
That sounds good.
Okay.
I believe you have the grand list in front of you, or it was in your packet. And I think you have a page. It looks something like that. So as Kathy said, we had a revale. The revale, it's a good revale statistically in terms of, you know, everything came out. It is into the state now for certification. The state actually has to approve your revale. We anticipate that we'll do that in the next week or so. But overall, the grand list grew by 18.4%. It was, real estate grew by 20.5%. Personal property was, we had a real positive there, 9%, and motor vehicle, 3%. We knew, motor vehicle had a great year last year. We knew it was going to back off somewhat this year. And as everybody's been mentioning tonight, it's not a surprise. We knew we were going to have a shift. You typically do have a shift with the revale. The last two revales, we did not have a shift because both of them were actually, well, the last one was a positive revale. The one before that was a negative revale. We actually lost value, so there wasn't, as it pronounced, a shift. But this is basically a traditional revale. This is what usually happens with the revale. What compounds it somewhat, and it's a good thing, bad thing. You know, I was thinking about all the reasons why, why this occurs, and you heard a lot of them tonight, actually. And somebody mentioned this a couple of months ago. This is a, what you're living through now is a post-pandemic hangover. Everything that happened in the pandemic drove what's happening now. And as it was mentioned tonight, people, I believe somebody in the council said it. People escaped other places, and they came to Connecticut, and this wasn't, this isn't affordable place to live, and it's a popular place to live. And over the past three years, your housing prices just skyrocketed, and it's reflected in the revaluation. It really is. So, and that's what you're seeing. And the other thing, you know, and this is one of those things where we strive to have a good balance in our, in our commercial manufacturing industrial property versus our residential. And this is actually one of those cases where we do have, we have a very good split. You know, we're at 70, 69, 31, in that, in that range there. And unfortunately, what happens with the revale, when you do have a split like that, is again, you have more commercial that you're going to, that's going to shift, get the shift, and it's going to fall back on the residential. It's, as somebody said to me yesterday, if we were 100% residential, there would be no shift. So, yeah, obviously, we're not. We have a split, and we have a good ratio, and that's what you strive for. And unfortunately, in a revale like this, you do get that impact. And so, and then to compound it, commercial did not grow, and this is just a, and again, this is a pandemic thing. It's a whatever thing. You know, office space everywhere is hurting because people are not, a lot of people are not back to work, and some people may never go back to work. So that affects values, office values. Commercial is hurting also because, as all of us probably learned, or somebody in our family learned, it's, it's a lot easier to do at-home shopping. So a lot of the retail isn't experiencing the great boom or the great times that it was in the past. So, so we saw some downturn there also in values, which also just caused the shift to be a little bit worse than, than it normally would be. But again, it's a, it is a typical revale. If you go back, we're looking in previous years, and if you go back to the 2002 revale, this is very similar to what, what took place in 2002 in terms of the shift, in terms of how, how things played out. So it's, it's not, I guess the only thing I could say, the only surprise would be that, that commercial just didn't keep pace with, or, you know, but it wasn't unexpected, but we just, we're kind of hoping that it would just have some growth in it, more, or more growth than what it did have, so.
Okay. And Joe, you know, you were talking about the residential-commercial balance. I would say over time, that commercial that we have has been what's helped us to keep our mill rate down over the years. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, you, you want that balance. You want, you, you know, what you have is exactly what you want, 70, 30. You know, it's what you want because, you know, and this is, maybe this is cynical, but your commercial industrial doesn't demand as much services as your residential does. So, and they're, they're paying 40% of the burden. So, you know, it's clearly you, you want to have a good commercial base. You want to have a good, it helps keep your taxes down. It helps keeps, you keep your services affordable. I mean, basically, your services are mostly directed to residential properties. So, yes, you want to keep that balance, and this is going to occur, you know, when you, in a situation like this, whenever you do have a revale. You know, and also, a couple of things too. We did not factor into this. We looked at some homes and what the impact is on homes, but we did not look at what the impact is. The mill rate, if you, right now, would, would go down about 15%. It's, so if we It's, so, if we kept everything constant, if we kept everything, if we applied this revale to this year's budget, for example, the mil rate would go down 15%, things like a little over four mils. So, the benefit of that is, obviously, on the motor vehicle, if you have cars, you're going to pay less car tax. So, that does somewhat offset, I mean, not significantly in some, well, if you have a Tesla, I guess it would. But, but in some cases, you know, it will give you somewhat of a tax, some tax break. On your, because the mil rate will be lowered going forward. Even, no matter what you do, I mean, it's four mils, so it's, you know, it's, even if you were to add, you know, 3% to the budget, you're going to go up a mil. So, it's, and that's the other benefit of this. It's, you know, your grand list is now over $4 billion.
Four and a half billion dollars is our grand list, which is amazing.
Right. Your taxable grand list, I should say.
Yeah, yeah, that's tremendous. That's a great number. But again, it's the good and the bad.
Right, there's, yeah, unfortunately, there's good news, bad news.
Yeah. So, what you're saying is, with the grand list where it is right now, if that was our grand list last year, at the budget we passed last year, to pay for that, it would have been a 24.76 mil rate versus the 29.32.
Right.
So, that 15% down.
Right.
Or something down in that. Okay. And the big change there is just the shift again from commercial to residential, because the residential's went up more than that.
Right.
So, this being a very unusual budget season with that grand list in mind, we probably have to look at this somewhat differently than we do in a traditional budget season. We've looked at what tax increases would be. We've looked at what spending increases would be, different years. We've set ranges for targets. And I think this year, there are going to be a lot of different things we're talking about as far as where we can save to lessen the impact on the residential homeowners. So, I'll just leave that out there and see if anyone has any questions for Kathy or Joe before we go too far down this road.
Has, have you guys looked into the progress of some of the apartments coming online? I know we, you know, there's been a lot of talk with the moratorium and 1,000 units coming online, and whether those will be happening somewhere early or mid-budget season that would help supplement this down the road, or are they all too far out in construction?
Too far out.
There's, if you look at the page that says, it has the detail on it, you could actually see, the apartments did grow. The value of the apartments did grow 56%. And correspondingly, the commercial went down slightly, 3.3%. And that actually, a portion of that, it's caused by the shift of the myriad being turned into apartments.
Okay.
So, it came out of one category and dropped into another category. So, we are, we did pick up some of the, like the myriad, while it's in construction, we are able to do some assessment and some valuation of that.
Yeah, because the properties, for those that don't know, properties under construction are looked at on October 1st at percent completion, and they're assessed accordingly at that point between what beginning and what the total value.
Exactly.
But Johnny, one thing that I think, what you just said kind of made me think of something is that, that I think that we have to treat this budget season as a revale budget season, and it's different. And we have other commercial growth coming on next year, and things are still going in a very positive way. And so, even though commercial has gone down, like you said, these apartments are on the thing. Planning and zoning, as you know, has been very busy with different things. So, we see a lot of potential. This is solely related to a revale year and a shift that has occurred. And my advice to the council is that we have to really look at it as a, I'm calling it almost a one-off of how we do our budget. But that said, that we do it, that we don't make financial decisions that are going to affect us for 20 years. Because this is going to be a very tough budget season, because the shift is that broad. And, but you don't want to make decisions that are going to affect you, that are going to, we're going to be crawling out of for 20 years. That said, I do think there are things that we can do, which we have done before. This is not unusual, that we've, I, in my career here, we've had two revales that have been very similar to this. And what, there are things that we can do to try to limit the tax impact. But it would be, again, it is going to be difficult, because the shift has occurred. And to have, I think it's going to have to be a lot of different things. It's going to have to be lowering expenses. It's going to be having to look at the capital budget as, again, a one-off. We've been funding capital really significantly, looking at the capital budget. It's going to have to be looking a little bit at the fund balance. We've been saving our fund balance, we've been talking about the fund balance. We're going to have to look at the fund balance. I think that the shift has been so great that potentially, we have to look at phasing this revale. That Joe and I have been talking about that. There's, I know West Hartford phased their revale, that to do it over one or two, two years or three years. I think to see how, what we can, how low we can get that tax impacted down. And without, or on the other side, of making decisions that really would change this community. Because the numbers that we would have to come with to reduce the expenditure side of the budget to get us down to a 3% tax increase, is you're talking millions and millions of dollars out of this budget on the expenditure side. So, you're talking about on both the town and the board's side of changing the community completely, because you can't do it. You would, like, just, I'll give an example on the town's side. We've run numbers, and what you would have to do is almost keeping everything equal and getting down to a 3% type of thing. You're talking about laying off between 10 to 15 people on the town side of the government, easy. And that would be more so on the school's side. So, I, my suggestion, we answer and go through it, is that, almost going backwards to what I usually say, I usually say, let me come in and you guys add back in. I say, what would I think the best approach would be is say, what kind of tax rate right now, a range can you stomach? Now, back, the two tax rates before, the two revales that we had that were similar to this, the tax rate that the town had was 6.5%, and the other one was close to 10%. Those were the two tax rates that we had.
Which year was this?
2000 and...
12 and...
Nope.
Oh, sorry, 2004, 2005, 2013, 2014.
That was, that was a revale, but that wasn't the shift revale that was similar to this revale. Hold on. 3.4. Joe, what was it, 3,000?
8,000, 3,000, 4.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, 2,000, 2,008, 2,009, and 2,003, 2,004.
So, the, Joe and you alluded to this, the two revales we've had since the 08, 09, those were, you were saying, non-traditional revales?
The 2000, I'm trying to remember which one it was, 2000...
Be like 13 and 18, or something like that?
There was, not the last revale, the 2017, that was making up for the one before that, which was five years previous, that had been like 2012. The 2, the revale in that year was actually, we lost value. Instead of the grand list going up, the grand list went down.
Okay.
That was, if you recall, that was after the housing crash, if you will. So, that year, we actually lost, I forget how much it was. We lost significant value to the grand list. So, the 2017 was basically making up what we had lost in 2012.
Okay.
So, it wasn't a great, you know, it wasn't like, you didn't see great growth or anything like that. You just saw, let's get back to where we were prior to 2012.
Okay. So, we're 15 years since a traditional revale, really. It's been 15 years since the last one, and that was that 08, 09.
Oh, no, yeah. And that's what you used to see all the time, was the shift used to go to the residential property, and that's how it was. But to me, I think almost if we start backwards at the tax rate and say, I can, I can, we can do a range of the tax rate, and then have Joe and I try to create something where I've said, we're going to do all of the above. We're going to look at the capital, we're going to look at trying to reduce our expenditures without destroying, like, the whole organization. We're going to look at little bit of fund balance. We're going to look at seeing whether or not we can, it doesn't make any sense to phase it or not. And, and then come almost, I'm not going to say with two budgets, but come with a kind of a package with a range, with a tax rate, and then show what you would have to do or other options, and get you like to a place where you could start there and then move, instead of starting when we usually do with the expenditures. Because I think that if we start with just the expenditure side, when we go in March, it's going to be very, very confusing and very hard to put together. And I think that if we started at the tax rate, and we brought something to you in some sort of range, and then we, that was our starting point, and then we could go from there and say, well, we don't like the phase-in, but if we wanted to do this, or we wanted more in fund balance, or you wanted more cut out of the expenditures, everything's going to have to be touched. And it's just a question of how far you want to go to get to the tax rate that you feel comfortable with and that can get passed.
All right, let's get a few questions.
Can we, so, you said that historically it takes 3% spending to keep sub-as-is.
Yeah.
So, can we start off by knowing what that tax increase would be to the average taxpayer?
So, on, let's say on both sides of the equation?
Sure.
With, and so, I think we've said right now, right, that if it was apples to apples, it would be a 12% tax increase.
Okay, so that's with a 3% spending increase, 12% to the average taxpayer in town.
Zero, the way I understand it. We kept the budget exactly the same.
Kept the budget exactly the same.
So, 0% increase.
Yeah.
Have you kept the budget exactly the same, no change to the expenditure side, no change to the non-revenue side? The average assessed value, which is a $301,000 value, would be a 12.25% tax increase.
Okay. You're going to need to repeat that again, Joe.
So, you took the, this year's budget.
Yep.
And made no changes to it, other than apply the grand list to it. The average assessed value, residential value, at this point, we've been using the number $226,000. That was our number. That number now is $301,000.
Because everybody's property values increased.
Everybody's property values increased, or the residential property values increased. So, you would apply the new mil rate, which is the four-mil reduction, and that person would still have a tax increase of, that, or that property would have a tax increase of 12.25%.
So, Joe, obviously, you have the numbers at, so if we did a 3% increase this year?
Expenditure.
Yeah, what's that, what's that dollar, cent? Obviously, it's a cut. How much we have to eliminate from the budget?
Well, if you, if you did a 3%, like, the board, I guess, did a 2.99. And if Kathy, being ultra-competitive that she is, she's going to probably come in at a 2.98. So, if you did that, and you factor in debt service, and again, I haven't gone through the non-tax revenues at this point, or what the grants, the state, I don't know what the state grants look like at this point. But assuming all that stays constant, you're probably looking at an additional $300 to the average taxpayer, so it'd probably be a 17% tax increase. So, 12%, would be the revale, and the difference, the 5% would be, I think 4.7% would be, an additional 4.7 would be the, the budget increase.
So, if we went backwards, so if Suits tracked it, 9% off the 12 to a 3%, where would that land us? So, you're saying a 3% tax increase?
If you want a 3% tax increase based on where you are right now, you have to cut $9 million, or you have to affect the budget.
$9 million.
$9 million. Either some combination of revenue increase, non-tax revenue increases, or expenditure reductions. So, you basically would have to do $9 million.
From last year's budget.
From last year's budget. So, so basically, what you're saying is, you know, you would have to, your budget would now go to 112, 112 million. You're at 121 million, you have to go to 112 million.
And was that what you mentioned, Kathy, about the rainy day fund, taking money from there too?
Yeah, I think, I think if there was ever a time to use the rainy day fund, this would be a time to do it.
Okay, and we have currently 27 there?
What's the percentage on that, Joe?
No, we have, yeah, we currently have $19.9 million in the rainy day fund. That's about 16% of our operating expenses right now.
You said that 19. what?
19.9.
And again, the town has absolutely, in the past, used the rainy day fund. And again, some of the things that we have to analyze, and we want to, I think it would be appropriate to use some of the rainy day fund, but what happens is that, again, the year after, you don't have that rainy day fund anymore. And so, then you have to fill that gap. And so, again, there's how much you use of it, because you don't have it the next year, then you have to fill the gap in. So, again, I definitely, at this point, we haven't analyzed everything. I would be saying, recommending that if there was ever a time to use some of the rainy day fund, I would think that this would be a time to do it.
So, go ahead.
You go ahead.
Okay, I'll go ahead.
So, obviously, this entire situation makes me very uncomfortable. And the reason being is because I, I sit here, as you sit here, and you get all the numbers, you get to ask the, write the questions, but telling this story is not going to be easy. Couple of things, couple of thoughts. First, average house, mean house, median house, nobody really knows what that means. And I know for our purposes, we will benchmark that, so we get to keep that. But I think, as we're going through this process, I think we need to introduce tax increase per 100,000. So, and I know there's a calculator online, but just something simpler that the public can understand, because as we're talking about the average house, everybody's like, well, I live in an average house. And they have, they don't really know, unless they go back and check it. So, just one thing that I think, and again, sidebar, revale, we're telling a different story. I don't, I'm not saying we do this going forward just for this year. The other thing is, I think it, to tell the story, and I'm not saying to lay out an entire budget, but as you, let's say we set the benchmark at a 3% increase, is what we've done historically. Maybe we also need to take a look at what 0% increase does. Not that we're advocating for that at this point, we don't have all the information. But how many jobs get cut? Where, what services, and not just the ones that get everybody riled up, but the real ones that we were prioritized. The town and the Board of Ed are both there to make the hard decisions. Council has to, you know, okay that in the end. But at least, we can tell the story that if we don't spend an extra penny, at least they'll know that a portion of that, or a large portion of that, has strictly to do with the increase on the revale. Or we split it up where it's, here's the spending increase part of it, here's the revale part of it. And then they would see that if they're, you know, the average person is paying $500 more per year, that 400 has to do with the revale and 100 with the spending, or vice versa. I think that, and again, those are just thoughts. I think I'd have to think more of the details through, or as you guys are looking at this. We're going to be up here talking a lot of numbers, and we're going to be confusing the hell out of people between, you know, I know this is only my second year into this, but at least I've got one budget cycle, a really easy one, under my belt. But now, we're going to be talking numbers of tax increase, spending increase, what's the revale doing, what's the commercial doing, what's the average, which was always 231, now it's 300. And I think we really need to be very clear and easy in how we set up a, even a one-page bullet point, like, this is what it means for the homeowner. Because if we don't make that clear, and we don't make those points and tell the story, this is going to be a disaster in the end. There's no way we're going to come out of this. I'd be sitting in my own living room right now bitching at myself, not knowing what I know. So, I do think we need to take a look at that. I will add, though, that as someone who obviously pays attention to this, and I've been mentioning this prospect for probably six months now, because this is what I do. I'm part of this, of the residential and commercial. The average homeowner also has to understand that from 2008 till now, we hadn't really seen the increases that we should have seen in residential all along the way. This is, all of a sudden, we got our steroid shot, and it's all coming in one shot. So, I don't know if there's a way to tell the story of appreciation and what historically it was before 2008, and then why we're here. People will understand that story. Again, not to... Again, not to go down too many wormholes as far as, as putting it together. But I do think, I do think we have to take a look at a hard spend limit. And I, again, not maybe an entire second budget. I do agree with Kathy that, you know, I can buy into this hole, looking at it a different way, because this is not an orthodox, or this is not a normal year of looking at this. But also, we have to keep in mind, after all that and you package it together, the average homeowner has had increases over the last two to three years. They've already been hit. So from a homeowner's standpoint, we're sitting here as the town and we're saying, well, we need this to keep it up, but a lot of households have been getting hit for the last two years, and now we're about to hit them again, just so that the town can keep where it is. And I think we, that's where I get to the, the 3% versus 0, and where's that in between? Because it can't be shared just on one portion, it's got to be shared all the way through. And I think we had a pretty easy time last year and we were able to pass that along. But I do think we have to keep in mind that everybody's costs have gone up over the last two years and they have not made up for it in their, in their job income, or they haven't been able to ask for the raises that were necessary to make it up. So I think that we have to be very, very careful that we keep that in mind.
Okay, Rafina?
I think I should have gone first. Man, I'm not kidding. So I couldn't agree with Johnny more, there are a couple of things. One, it's how we, okay, last year I advocated for not setting a target at all, because I always feel, not always, at the time, and I still do feel, like we don't have enough information to make an educated estimate of what the tax increase should be, or what the target should be. I'm all for getting the information in front of me and then understanding it and then being able to opine, okay, well, this is like whatever that year. And especially this year, I feel like if we have just a general idea that we want to keep taxes as low as possible, after we've received all the information, that seems more realistic than trying to set a target and then saying, here, we're going to do like X percentage or Y percentage. It just, I think, everybody, we sat here just last meeting, talking about keeping the 1928 building and using ARPA funds for those things. And there were a couple of people in town, and after that meeting, a number of residents approached me like, why are we spending so much? Why are we doing this? And I think educating our residents about when those taxes, if, for example, the high school building project, and when those taxes hit, the 1928 building, when those taxes would be hitting. Educating our residents so that they understand and are along with us and understand why we are making the decisions that we're going to be making is super important. Again, just not operating in like this vacuum, like, okay, this is a year, we understand it's a revale, we understand that it's higher, higher on the residential burden side, we get that. But how do we educate ourselves enough to make a decent plan? And how do we educate the voters so they understand what we did?
Good. Thank you. Joe, did you have something?
Yeah, Joe, quickly, is there a threshold for the rainy day fund that is comfortable to take away from, that doesn't affect us AAA-wise, doesn't affect us if some major catastrophe happens, that we do have to really go at it?
Just, I guess there's a couple of answers. The AAA part of it, I guess what I would say is, it's not so much the idea that, when a rating agency looks at you and your use of the rainy day fund, using it for a one-time thing like this isn't such a, I mean, it's a concern to them, but it's not as big a concern as if you relied on it every single year. If you're using it to balance your budget every single year, if it's, if it's a crutch, if you will, then it's, it's more of a concern to them. So they don't have any, they, they look more at practice as opposed to some percentage. The other thing is, you have a, your range right now, I believe your fund, fund balance policy says it's 12 to 15%. So that's your, you're striving to stay in that range of 12 to 15%. You're at 16%, a little over 16% right now. You know, if you went back to the 14 and a half to 15% range, you probably would be fine. You'd be within your policy. The third consideration, this probably not what you asked, but, and it's what Kathy said before, whatever you do now, you basically have to make up for in the future. So if you take $3 million from fund balance now, that's $3 million you have to fund next year.
And now my other question is going to be, like, how long is it going to take us to make up that gap?
It's not even that you have to get it back into fund, you know, to put it back into fund balance, it's a matter of that, you have a gap in your budget next year of $3 million that you have to then make up for next year. So whatever you take, you want to make sure that over the long term, you know, you're, you may not make the whole thing up next year, but if, say you take a million, a million and a half, they say, well, now I have to find a million and a half next year. And, and we, you know, we played this, I'm not saying it's a game, but we played this back in the early 2010s, where we would take a little bit of fund balance to offset the revales, to offset some of the difficult times we had back then. But we took enough that we knew we could make it up over the next couple of years. We didn't put our budget into a big hole. And, and actually, we, we did have to use fund balance for a couple of years as a crutch and then we winked ourselves off of it. And, and you may have to do that again. For, for just gaps, you may have a great year, you may have a big surplus and yet back to fund balance, and you may get a windfall from a state like we did two years ago. So it, it's hard to say, but the idea would be that you would build it up over, you know, don't take so much that you got a huge hole next year, but take enough that you feel comfortable that you'll be able to make it up over the next year or so.
Thank you.
I, I can't give you a dollar amount, but I could, you know.
And either of those other, the revale years where we had bigger tax percentage jumps, did we phase in the revales in either of those years?
No, we didn't, we didn't phase in the revale. What we did on both of those big years, we basically cut the capital almost down to nothing, and we also used some fund balance on both of those. And one year, the expenditures were very low. In the other year, the expenditures were not low.
And then, just layman's terms, like, so if we phased it in, we were expecting, you know, just to keep the numbers, what we had talked about before, a 12.5 increase, because we did a zero expenditure increase, we'd really be talking about, you know, six and whatever change this year, then six and whatever change next year, we'd just be up for another bigger increase next year. We're not getting rid of any liability, we're just spreading it out.
Correct.
So I don't, I don't have much to add. Beyond what Johnny said, I completely agree. As far as the story of this goes, it's, this is, I mean, Joe, I don't know if you can give an answer on this, but this is, this is really, this is caused because of this revaluation coming at the wrong time. It's not caused because we spent like wild maniacs last year and we just didn't care and we blew out the budget, correct?
Yeah, this has nothing to do with spending.
Yeah.
This has nothing to do with spending at all. This is purely.
Values.
This is, this is what you get rewarded for, you know, it's kind of, the irony of this is, you sit here and say you want to make, your town, your mission statement says you want to make this an attractive place to live and work. You fund your school system, you fund your services, people want to come here.
Yeah.
So you, people want, you know, you have a national, a worldwide catastrophe, people want to move and go someplace affordable, safe, attractive, they come here, supply and demand. You, you know, you don't build it, have enough housing, prices go up, and then timing being what it is, we do a revale and, you know, we're, we're at the top end of the, of the housing market.
And so the other things I think that, and thank you for that answer, Joe. The things I think would be important for everybody to, the critiques of the council, I think, in this budget season, regardless, I, I think in whatever direction it lands in and wherever we land in, it's going to be that we are spending, we have a high school, we have the 1928 project, you know, the bridge is a million years down the road potentially, but we, still, that gets lumped into all these projects. You know, is to make sure people understand, 1928 is going to be something that will be voted on. So if people are, you know, averse to the spending or averse to the tax, that can still be voted down, you know, and then we have to make whatever adjustments we can make. My only other, my only other point was going to be, just doing really, really simple math, I just added the last nine years of percent change and then put that 12.25 in, and that gets us to an, an average of 3.35 increase over the last three years. So that goes back to Johnny's point of, there really hasn't been this sustained, you know, where we're really kind of playing catch-up on previous years and not accumulating values in our, in our homes. And that's why we're sort of getting whacked right now. So, no good answers. My, my vote would be to, to go along with what Kathy was saying, as far as just seeing it a million different ways, I do think we, we unfortunately need to see what a budget looks like with a 0% increase, a 3% increase, so we can, so the town knows, like, if this money has to be spent, or if the tax increase is so bad, if we, if we don't do that, what do we lose as a town? And does that, as you say, change the town, you know, from what it is now?
Right. And I guess, and I don't, again, again, about, and Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, about, you know, what we're presenting. And, and again, I think like what we're showing, are we showing it in general terms? Because honestly, if we are going, like, let's just say, we're going to go at a 3% tax increase, okay? So that means you're going to tell the Board of Education 3%, you're going to tell us 3% at the tax increase. So we're cutting eight or nine million dollars out of the budget. So you're going to tell the board to cut $5 million, you're going to tell me to $4 million. And so that's going to be out there, they're going to come and tell you that, what, what that actually is. I'm going to come and to do that, I'm going to have to lay off four cops, one firefighter, three public works people. I, that, it's a fact. That's what, to do that, that's what's going to happen. And that's, and again, are we doing that exercise? Because that is, that's what it is, because to cut $8 million out of the budget, on that budget, it's, I think Joe and I worked it out on my side, it's 15% out of the municipal budget. And we can go through that exercise, but we've now caught, are we, is that what we're really going to do? And I don't know, that's something to think about, but are we really going to do that? And if we're not really going to do that, is, should we range it and say, have that conversation, that, have that at the time, that if we are going to 3%, we would have to lay off 10, 15 people?
Sure.
We would have to do this. And the board would say, this is what we'd have to do, other than, that's the budget you want. And then we have a house full of teachers, cops, public works people, residents. You know, because I'll give you an example. We have a $140 million school project being built. We don't have, we have one and a half building inspectors. Now, we're not going to have, they're going to have to be at that school inspecting. So that means people that are doing their home jobs and everything like that. You're going from a week to get inspection to two and a half weeks, because they're at a high school project. We have snowplow routes, we have to lay off four snowplow drivers. We've never done anything like that. Now, instead of having your snow done at, you know, 7:00 AM, you're having it done at 10:30 in the morning. And again, you, you all know that, but I guess my point is, is that, do we actually want to come in March with that budget to everyone? And I think the better way, honestly, is have, in very general terms, very clear, that if we get to this number at 3%, it is an $8 million cut out of the town's budget. And this town, this would be my suggestions, I would lay off six people, I would do this, I would do that, the board would do the same thing on their side, but it would be much more general.
Yeah. A general sense, I think, is fine, and that's, and that's fair. I don't think, I don't want to waste anybody's time by diving too deep into the minutia of exactly what it looks like, but I do think, I can just picture the town budget meeting in April, and, and people with the questions, why is this increase so, such an outlier? What are we doing wrong or what's happening? And to be able to explain exactly what the revale and explain.
Yeah.
If we kept it in line with where we were last year, this is all the things that our town would lose, in a general sense. I think, I, I do think that people needed to know that, as Johnny's point, like, to tell the story of where we are now.
Okay. Ed?
Yeah, I don't think I have a whole lot more to add after all that conversation. But I, I mean, it sounds like it's going to be a, a tough balancing act going through this budget process. We have to be mindful of the, the impact of the residents to the taxpayers and, you know, I'm open to looking at, you know, taking some from rainy day funds, cutting dramatically on capital improvement, but also being mindful of any holes that we leave in the budget, in the operating budget that we'll have to deal with next year.
Brian?
There's not much more to say, you guys have covered everything. And Kathy, I have to say, thank you for everything you've done so far. And I agree with you that this is a very unique and different year, and taking a new approach in how we're going to address it is really what we should be looking at. And it's going to take a lot of work to.
Yeah, go ahead, Rafina.
I just had one other question. It's a follow-up from Keith's comment about the 1928 building going to referendum. So hypothetical situation, we go to referendum, the referendum doesn't pass, does that then free up the ARPA funds? And if it does, well, I guess it does, can we use that for any budget or any, any town expenditures to offset this year's taxes? Or tax increase?
We, the ARPA funds are almost, we can use them for almost anything now, the, the funds are used for that. The question, though, with the policy decision of the council has been, is again, not using the ARPA funds like a, like the fund balance to, then you have to make up that number. So make, if you put the $7 million into the operating budget, next year we don't have that $7 million, so how do we get that $7 million? But that said, we've always recommended, could we use them for one-time capital projects that are in the budget? Sure, you could use the ARPA funds for things like that. You could use them for, you know, again, I would do it more on capital projects, even though like snowplow trucks are every year, but you could use the ARPA funds for that. But I would do it maybe on something, tungstous meat, or something that's in the capital that you do at one time. But that said, you could do it for almost anything. It's just a question, you have to make it up the next year if it leaves a hole in your budget.
Yeah, the problem with that, just like the, taking the money out of the reserve is, next year, however much you spend, let's say we spent $7 million, we said, you know, we're going to put $7 million towards our operating expenses this year. Next year, we'd have to make up $7 million. So that budget would have a gaping hole in it, which means a massive increase next year, because it's $7 million that we didn't, the taxpayers didn't pay for. So their tax rate's going to jump up because of that $7 million.
But I thought this year it was especially egregious, because we had the reevaluation, it was heavily on the residential tax base. So, but that hopefully won't be the case next year, right? So if we were able, you know, hypothetically, to use ARPA funds, would that not be a better use of the ARPA funds for this year? Would we not have a hole next year?
Well, let's just say that it takes, our budget, our operating budget is, what is my?
121.
Hold on one second, so I have so much paper in front of me. Not going to look at the 2003 budget. Oh, gosh. So our operating budget on the town side is $33 million, that's what it takes to run things. So now we use ARPA funds in that budget somewhere, instead of, I cut the police budget by $1 million and I throw in an ARPA fund of $1 million. I throw in public works another $1 million. That $1 million is gone the following year. So now my police budget is short $1 million, which is five people. Or my public works budget is short. And so I don't have those funds to put back in to supplement the ARPA funds. So you, you really should be using the ARPA funds for one-time type of large capital expenditures. You don't have to, just like with the fund balance, you can use it and spread it out, except the ARPA funds we have to use in a quick.
2026.
Yeah, a quick period of time. But you're going to have to make up anything that's in that budget. So my budget should have been $34 million, it's really only $33 million or $32 million because we've used the ARPA funds. The next year, I got to get us back up to the 34, because I have all the people, I have all the services, I have everything that is being paid for at $34 million. And I don't have, I only have 32 in my budget now, because I'm not using the ARPA funds anymore.
So, just to finish that thought, and then I'll go on to you for a second. The $7 million out of $121 million budget is about 5.5%. So you'd have a 5.5% hole in next year's budget. So although it's not a revale year, if you increased 3%, you'd have that $5 million, 5.5% to add to that to make up the hole. So by spending it, but, first off, right now, at this point, we've committed to the 1928 building and going to referendum. If we get to that point where it fails, we can either decide, we're going to go back on what this council decided, and we said we wanted to use the ARPA money for major capital expenses, and we could do what Kathy's talking about and put it in towards different capital expenses. And the operating budget, we do just the normal way next year. But if we wanted to, we could certainly take a vote and say, no, we want to use this for the operating, it's, you know, I'd argue against it personally, but we could do that. I mean, we do have that option, if it failed, and if the budget failed. Because if the budget passed, and ARPA failed, or the 1928 building failed, we still have that money to spend, but it couldn't be spent on the budget that just passed, because the budget's already passed. Doesn't get any easier than explaining it, but, go ahead, Johnny.
My mindset to go along with what Rafina was saying was more, you know, 1928, just to keep this in our pocket, if it does not go through, we have 7 million.
A half, 7 and 1/2.
7 and 1/2 million, so instead of, so we have a five-year capital expenditure plan, whether it's fire trucks, it's police cruisers, things like that. And if we were to basically use 1.75 or 1.89 something, because it's 7 and 1/2 million, per year to fund that stuff, to get us to four years to the next revale, it wouldn't necessarily be eating our budget, it would be us earmarking it by 2024.
Spending by 2026.
And spending by 2026, getting us to the next revale, and it's just an idea. But no, I would not go along with plugging the hole with ARPA funds. I think that you're right, I think that just creates, that's just us kicking the can down the bud, down to the next year, the year after. And right now, the story, as hard as it is, or difficult it is to tell, you have something to point at, which is the revale. Next year, if you gotta come in with an increase, or the year after, you don't have anything to point at, and then it's really a disaster. So I was thinking more along the lines of something like that, because I think it's gonna take 10 things like that to make this budget work, that's the way I'm looking at it, and like Kathy said, it's gonna take, maybe we go to 15, we take that little spot, maybe we look at that, if the 1928 doesn't go, then maybe we phase in two years, but I think it's gonna be, honestly, it's gonna be a shotgun approach, see what we feel comfortable with and what we don't, and I think we're gonna end up going with multiple of those things, personally.
And I think the other thing, again, in our messaging, and it doesn't, you know, again, like you were saying about the housing, we kind of hit it all at once, but the other thing, too, is that if you look at our tax rate, and what people have got, and over the last five years, I think our tax rate, the average, was 2 point something percent, which is considerably lower than most of the community, tax increase. And not that that helps people, but again, what you've got in the town of Farmington for your value over the last 10 years, and what you've been paying for that, and what your mill rate is, and again, it's gonna be a difficult year, but if you're gonna say, because this is based on the revale, it's not based on our spending. Our taxes are still, when this is all done, our mill rate's coming down again, you know, so we're still gonna be low in our mill rate with our taxes. So when you look at that, and you say, a new school, a water pollution control, you have a service level where you have your rails to trails, and you have people that are on the trails picking up the garbage, you have police and the part-time people, you have a really good quality of life, and you have, and that quality of life has bumped your values up, and it's bumped your values up, and I keep on, it's a one-off. And then when we get through it, we're gonna be in a situation where our mill rates come back down again. We financially planned how everything is going, with where it all fits in, our debt's still coming off. Everything is still gonna be working as our financial plan has shown us how it's gonna work. We just have to get over this hump, and what I just would encourage, we're gonna have to make difficult decisions, and everyone, there's difficult decisions, and then I think there's financially not smart decisions. And I think that what, that's gonna be the hard thing, because I think we're gonna all be pushed some way to say, let's maybe make this decision, where we've spent 20 years trying not to make those decisions. And I think that we have to, we're gonna have to make decisions that are different, but I think that we just have to try to stay the course, stay the course, and have, you know, do the best we can, and it's not gonna be easy, it's not gonna be easy.
I don't, I don't disagree, Kathy, I just, again, you know, two years ago, my groceries were 250 a week. Now they're 400 a week.
Yeah, but you got more kids.
Regardless, they're higher, my electricity was average about 175 bucks a month, now it's 250 a month. So the households of Farmington have had to tighten their belt through this, and all I'm saying is, if we hold the line at three, we're kinda status quo, that I think that we have to strive for something, not at zero, but something between the three, and maybe three with a tightening of our belt.
You're saying maybe expenditure side?
Expenditure side, understood, because my expenditures have gone up, so has every other household, but now, we're also having this shift, which is also gonna bring the expenditures up. So when I'm, you know, whatever, if I've got a neighbor who comes to me and says, well, what is the town doing to tighten their belt? I've gotta have a legitimate answer, and I think that's the mindset, not at zero, I understand. We can't, we can't just butcher what we've done and built over the last, how many years before I was here? But at the same time, we do have to make some hard decisions on tightening our belt. And maybe, and I, and I said, I led the conversation by saying, like, I don't wanna go after the hot topics that everybody talks about, whether it's cutting school sports, or police or fire, but maybe it's, maybe it's a one round of leaf pickup versus two, maybe it's, you know, and again, those may not mount to anything, but I think those are the types of things that we've gotta look at when we say tightening our belt.
Right, and I just wanna make sure we're clear, because I think two different things. Absolutely, I agree, when you were saying, on the expenditure side, from three to zero. That's not catastrophe for the town, I'm sorry, and it's not catastrophe. We would have, we probably would have to, we would be, to get to zero, we'd see some difference. We'd go from an A minus, probably to a B on our service level, but it wouldn't be catastrophe. But I was saying, if you're going for a tax rate at 3%, you're talking, that's what I'm talking about, cutting 8 million dollars out of the budget, so I just wanted, I was saying, when I was talking about that, I was talking about the tax rate. I think you're right, that we absolutely have to tighten our belt on the expenditure side, it's all a part of it, I agree.
Thank you.
Just kinda circling back to, you know, your comment, Kathy, about decades of Farmington doing the right thing and operating in a certain manner, and as I mentioned earlier, the town services, the schools, as well as the tax rate, are what draw people to Farmington. Our current mill rate of 29.32 compares to Avon at 34.61, Granby 39.98, Simsbury 37.41, West Hartford 40.68. We are well ahead of our neighbors, our peers. If you look at the average, or the median home value, our median taxpayer in Farmington pays just under $10,000. In Avon, they pay $12,000, in Simsbury, $12,000, almost $13,000, in West Hartford, $15,000. So what the council has been doing for decades has brought us to this point. All those municipalities, all those towns are seeing the same type of increases. I was going through, just getting a look at what some of them are facing right now, and they're all in exactly the same boat, everyone has gone through revale as we are right now. So this is not unique to Farmington, this is unique to all the towns that are going in revale. I think Simsbury just got an extension, so we don't see where they are right now. But at the end of the day, wherever we land with a number, our mill rate, I would venture to say, will be still the lowest mill rate in the Farmington Valley. Our higher home prices, all the other communities are gonna have higher home prices as well, so they're gonna be increasing their taxes. I think we do have to do what we can, and kind of the charge does need to be, look at every option. I have been fighting, every year I've been on the council, not to spend down the reserve. We had a year where we had a historic blizzard, the Halloween blizzard, where we had power outage, I personally lost power for 12 days. We had our community living up at the high school. We had a flood that same year, where the high school was an island, because Farmington Avenue was flooded on both sides, and we had people on the council saying, hey, it's raining, let's spend this. And I fought against it, because we could figure out a way to run our budget without spending the reserve. That being said, the rain is coming down, the water's rising. I mean, I would go against everything I've always said, because this is a time that we've seen something we haven't seen for 15 years. And to do what we can to help lessen the impact on our homeowners, I think we've gotta consider that. Fortunately, over the past few years, we have continued to add to the reserve. I think, Joe, what, 16.6%, is that what you said? Our target's 15%, so we've got a cushion there to begin with, so we've got some money that we can use. You know, I don't think we have to go the way of the state to try and get to 18% on that, because we don't have all the same issues, we've been funding our pensions, we've been paying a lot of different bills along the way. So I would like to see Kathy and Joe saying, okay, that's one thing. Let's see what phasing in the revale would look like, if you phased in over two years, over three years. You know, what are the dollar values on that? That means next year, you know, part of it's being affected next year, part the year after. So instead of roughly 30%, the homeowners, if it was over three years, would get 10, 10, 10. So it's not as big an impact. With that being said, to Joe's point, I think we also have to show considerably tightening our belts on the town side, on the Board of Education side. You know, we're certainly gonna have to do very limited capital spending this year, and figure out where else we can go. So I think we can give them the charge of saying, okay, give us a few numbers, just so we see what the extremes are, what would a 3% tax increase look like, and just not how it would affect each department. I don't think we even really have to know that, but get that broad-range number, so we see, so the town residents can see, this is how dire it is, you know, we were talking about that 9 million dollars, that's a 7.42% cut from this year's budget. That's huge, I mean, that's, you're, you know, Kathy was kind of humanizing it by telling the people that her cut, but imagine if, you know, tomorrow, okay, you had 7 and 1/2% less to spend on everything. Forget eggs, because nobody can afford them anyway, but, you know, what are you gonna be able to cut? So we've gotta show the town, we're going to be cutting in different areas, we're gonna be tightening our belts as much as we can. What would be helpful to you, Kathy, I mean?
Well, I think, I think if you, if we kind of are in the range, do different ranges on the, see what comes out with the tax rate. You know, again, we're gonna try to do all those different things, but I think, to Johnny's point, if, on the expenditure side, I think that you should probably give a target of what, how, where you want me to at least start there of, on the expenditure side, I think that would be helpful.
You're up, Johnny, why don't you start, and we'll see what everyone's thinking.
In a perfect world for me, I'd like to see a zero expenditure, so that at least we have a clear benchmark of, the town has not spent a single penny anywhere, and this is what the revale is doing. And then I think it's an easier conversation going back and forth. So, you know, I was never talking about a 0% tax increase, because it's not fair to say, it would be 0% on a residential tax increase, because it's, the town isn't just residential, there's everything that goes in it. So my benchmarks were zero expenditure and three expenditure, and then seeing where we come somewhere in between.
So a range of 0 to 3, you're saying?
I guess the question I would have is that, to go to zero is gonna be, it, I mean, it's do, of course, it's doable, and it's not gonna be completely devastation, but it is going to be, it's not, I worry about the people, because it's public, and that, when I have to present the budget. And at 0%, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, we're definitely into people, I don't think we can get down to zero without people.
Six, seven?
People, six or seven people. I mean, so, again, we could present it and say, in general terms, and these are the people, and not say who the people are, or, or we're all out, and we do it, and this is, this is what it is. But zero, with the inflation, with the contracts, like I said, to keep things, it's like 3%. I think, personally, I think we're gonna, at 2%, somewhere around there, I think these are the things you'd say. You'd see no summer help, you'd maybe see one or two full-time people. You would see all sorts of tightening of the belt of our accounts, where instead of funding them, we'd be making sure, you know, fully funding, we'd start playing like snowplow averages, and bigger numbers like that. We'd start lowering things down, and at two, maybe a couple of people, possibly, but after, once you start going there, there's really nothing left, it's gonna be the programs, and the programs could be like the leaf pickups, but that's, that's a hot topic, like, I would, I don't think.
They don't say that like it's nothing, people get furious about that, but anyway.
I mean, I don't, I've never met a program that was easy to cut.
Yeah, but...
Okay, no, that's good, Rafina, thoughts on?
So that's, that's my mindset, though, just to be out there, like, 0 to 3, knowing that we have these other avenues to plug the hole between those two.
Rafina, thoughts on expenditure?
Oh, gosh.
Range, numbers, anything?
Last year, and I said it again, I don't think that we have enough information to make these decisions, and I get that everybody wants to have a target. If we were to do a 3%, like, just like we did, right, on the expenditure side, meaning the schools, what does that mean for the tax increase for the average homeowner?
15%.
15.
17.
17%.
17, it's, including the revale, it would be 17. Look, if the town budget came in at a 3%, the board, it did come in at a 3%, 2.99. And again, I'm not talking about keeping capital budget where it is right now, and what you have to build in for debt service. Yeah, it's basically my financial forecast that gave you a couple of weeks ago. Couple of weeks, I said to you, based on what's going on, you need a 5%. Not common belief, you need a 5% tax increase next year.
Two's for the board, two's for us, and then cut the gap back. We could be real for all expenditures down low.
It's like 4.7%. Tax increase, just increasing the budget, not common. That was, that was built into it, that was built into the financial forecast, say, we looked through a couple of weeks ago.
Is it even possible to get lower than a 10%? Like, if we were talking, like, okay, 17 seems outrageous, right, to I think everybody listening and sitting here. Is it even within the realm of possibility to get lower than 10% for a tax increase for the average homeowner?
I don't wanna complicate this more, but, and Johnny was right. This tax increase is not really tied to the average homeowner. Your tax increase with the revale is tied to how much your property value went up.
Right, I understand that.
It's really, you know, some people are gonna say, well, I'm the average, and my property went up, and my taxes didn't go up 12%, they went up 20%. And some people are gonna say, well, I'm at the average in my taxes. There are people actually in this revale, whose taxes will only go up 5%, or, you know, because their base was, they went up, but they didn't go up, they went up 18%, or they went up, you know, 15%. And there's some people who actually went up 27, 28% in value. So it's not so much, it's where you started and where you ended, it's not so much what the average.
Right.
I mean, yes, we always use this terminology, the average taxpayer, and this is what the impact is. But, you know, and it happens every revale, I'll have somebody come in and say, you know, my house went up, you know, I'm at the average, and my property, my values went up, you know, 30%.
But it's what you bought at.
So it's where you started and where you ended. So you have to be careful about that, you know, I mean, I did 20 houses. I basically, the values this year, and what they paid in taxes, and what their assessment is, and what they would pay at the new mill rate, if you will, and it's all over the place. I have people, I have actually a person with a tax decrease, and I have, I have a house in town with a tax decrease, and I have a house in town with, what is it, a 47% tax increase. So, you know, it's...
Because it's variable, depending on when you bought, and how long you've held on to your property.
Okay, you can ponder, anybody else? Brian, how about that? What have you got for?
I was thinking along the same lines as you, John, that we have to look at what's in between the 1 and the 3, to see where we are as our baseline, and I hear what you're saying.
He says 0 and 3, just so you know, you just said 1, 3.
Did I say 1 and 3?
You did.
I meant 0 and 3, sorry, John. 1, 0 and 3, but I would like to see more information, as you're saying, Rafina, because I wanna find out what kind of impact we're gonna have on the town and services.
Yeah, I mean, I think, oh, yeah.
Ed, any thoughts on expenditure, numbers?
Yeah, I mean, I see where you're going, Johnny, with having the range 0 to 3, to kind of, for the communication aspect of it, being able to tell the town, we didn't touch anything, and these are all the things that you're going to lose, basically. So I think from that, and then, I guess, also getting back to what you were saying, Kathy, is there any concerns with, when we come in with this range, in terms of how the employees interpret?
Yeah, yeah, I...
Because I sense some hesitation.
Yeah, because it's all, it's all public, and so, they, there's, it's everyone's job, they know what's gonna happen. And again, even for the council, it's, you're not, again, at 0... And, and again, even for the council, it's, it's, you're not, again, at 0%, again, six or seven people, you're probably not being able to do that without taking someone from each of the divisions. And so you're going to, you know, it's, it's a difficult situation. And so, you know, to me, in some ways, I think like a 2% in this kind of market, on the school side and on our side, are both going to be very difficult to do, which I think we could publicly show that. And then have at that meeting, if we went to zero, how many more employees would you have to do? How much more would you have to go through? Almost kind of with the balance. And again, the only reason why I'm saying it, because I think 0% in this economy, with the inflation and the utilities and everything that's happening, we're having a really hard time even getting down to our 3%. So to get to 2% is even going to be more difficult. And then to 0%, now we're really talking about the people. But again, that, I get the policy decision, but expect that it's going to cause a, a lot, a lot of unrest on what, what goes on because it has to, it'll be public.
So, but what you were talking about there with, where you could do the 2% and do the 3% and then still show us the 0%, is that?
Yeah, I would say even a 2%, you know, if that's, you know, we're, and then you, 2% and we could add back, that would be a simple exercise where you'd go. And then the, going from two to 0% is kind of at the meeting, "Listen, if you guys wanted to go down further than this..." And again, at my budget, it's the manager's report. And so I'm doing mine. And then you have a week of time where you can have conversations and you say, "Kathy, you've done it at 2% and this is where we're at in our tax rate. And I've, I hope that you give me direction to move the capital and do this and do that and try to get us to where we need to be." And I present and the tax rate's still totally unacceptable. And we sit on the first day and you say, "Kathy, I need you to come back tomorrow and get us down to 0%. And I need a list of how to get us to the 0% expenditures." Board, you're going to need to do that too. And then you come back with those numbers. And I think showing at a 2% shows that you are tightening your belt because the community's going to feel that. They definitely are. There are definitely going to be things to get down to that level that's going to show differences in, in service level.
So if the range was two to three, would you come in with two, two budget proposals essentially? One at 2% or around that range and then one around 3%? And then the 0% would be more of a side conversation that we would ask you and say, "This is what additionally, if we weren't doing any increases, it would go down to this level, but without showing the detail that might scare people?"
Right. I wouldn't say side. I would say what it would be is that I would present at a, a public document. And then if that docu, if that was what you would ask me how to get us down lower, I would tell you examples of how to do it. And then if you asked me to peel the onion further, we'd peel the onion further and we'd keep on going.
Okay. So I think with that said, I, I'll go with the 2% to 3% range.
Good. Keith?
So I would just, as opposed to giving a range, I would say, would say, as a target, make the target 1.5%. Understanding that I agree with everything that Kathy just said, that the exercise would be to come in and see what would be added back, what it looks like, but.
Okay. Joe?
Like they said, it's not easy to talk about. But obviously Kathy and Joe are here for a reason. Kathy's been through this twice. Joe's been through this once. So basically after, you know, we sort of, you know, pay these people to guide us to where, how to move things forward. So the exercise that makes the most sense is a two to three in order to show us and then eventually peel back, peel back, peel back. I am comfortable with that.
Rafina, it's back to you.
Can I just abstain? I'm serious. I, I, I'm having like such difficulty. Every, okay, I've only had one year of experience. I just think that this is like the, like not the right way to do this, like.
Kathy needs some kind of guidance. If we just tell Kathy, "Give us a budget", she doesn't know whether she's, you know, the work she'd have to do to get us zero, one, two, three. That's why we've got to give guidance. Otherwise, you know, both Kathy and the Board of Ed are kind of spinning their wheels. Although they already came up with a number, but, you know.
Understanding that 3% wouldn't, would be a 17% tax rate increase, which is scary as all get out.
On residential.
On residential. Thank you, Johnny. That's my sidekick over here. Yeah, let's.
Make sure we're clear.
Just to be sure that we are clear. And zero would mean cutting people in services. I, one and a half to three for the exercise of it all because we'll make informed decisions when we have all of the information.
CJ?
Yep.
Can I offer up that it seems after hearing everything that we'd be comfortable as a benchmark at two? And just leave it at two instead of all these ranges? And then we can always add back. We could always peel back. But at least two would be the number that fits in everybody's range. I'm on my high side.
You're above Keith by a half point.
It's true. You're right.
I can come, I can acquiesce.
But if we, if, following Kathy's direction, if we start at two and that this is the budget we have and then at least we have a baseline and then we can add or subtract from there.
And if we do that, Kathy's prepared to say, well, you know, the, the broad stroke of yes, zero would be this because I think we'd like to hear just the broad strokes, not the drill down. But then she'd be prepared to say, "Okay, going up to three would be this. Going down to one and a half would be this." Okay, but how does that sound, everyone?
I'm comfortable with that, yeah.
Last question on direction.
Yep.
Okay, so March, I'm, you have your budget sheet that I'm presenting.
Yep.
So my number is going to say 2% there, okay? You're, you haven't talked about the board. The debt service is going to be what it is. We have the capital and we have the other things. We're going to fill in all the numbers. We've just described that with those types of numbers, this tax rate is going to be like 12%.
Astronomical, yeah.
Understood.
What is it at two, Joe? What is it, a 2% increase? Three was 17, I think.
So between, you know, you're 12 to 17.
Roughly. 12, whatever.
You got 1/3 of five at it.
Which brings me back to the beginning of the conversation is that, do you want Joe and I to then go and look at the capital? Because honestly, I don't, I don't think there's any way to get here without touching the capital. Touching the capital, looking at the fund balance, doing all those types of things so that when I present this, I'm actually getting it as low as we possibly can with that expenditure.
Yes, that's, we're talking about the expenditure side. I think everything we spoke about earlier. What would be the impact of basically decimating capital, making that as limited as we possibly can? Taking, you know, what would we have to take out of the reserve? How would phasing in over two or three years affect it? Because that, those numbers, those big numbers are just doing a one-time deal. How, first, I'd say, look at it before phasing. Then if we phase it over two years. And then we see which of those different tools that Joe and Kathy are going to give us, we would want to use. We might need to use every single tool in the box, which is, you know, in a year like this, very possible. But let's get that information so we could take steps and say, "Okay, here's, here's our starting point at two." Now, you know, maybe we're going to say, "Hey, two doesn't work" and you're back down to 1.5%, whatever it is. But I think two's a great starting point on expenditure to give us some kind of clue. And then we see what all those other options are.
Agreed.
All good?
It's good direction.
One last comment because I said the over-under was 940. Oh, we still have business. Never mind. We'll move on.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll save it for another budget.
And, and for this, just so we know, the board had their meeting, I think, Saturday and they came in at a 2.99, as Rafina reported earlier. So if we're going back to the board saying, "You got to tell us what a two looks like", there's going to be significant cuts. Obviously, there's 0.99 in cuts that they have to make to show us what a two looks like. So I think that's what we're looking at right here because in our expenditures, we're talking about serious belt tightening. So go ahead.
Is there a way to preserve the 2.99 on the Board of Ed? Because I think that's an essential expenditure and, or does it all have to be equal? Like if we say two?
It, it doesn't have to be equal, but I think we, for the numbers we're looking at here, I think we need to see what that looks like. Not, and I don't think, you know, the two's not carved in stone right now. This is where we're looking. We're going to see where things are going either way. But I think, you know, we want to be consistent, at least for what we're.
But to reach two, if you leave them at three, we have to be at zero to zero it out because they're 2/3 of the budget. I'm just saying. So I think historically, we've been even. I'd rather see it even.
Thank you for just saying.
Yes. Okay, so we should have a motion to target both the town and the Board of Education at a 2%.
Expenditure.
Expenditure, correct. So Joe, you want to make that motion?
I will redo my motion to have a target for expenditure of 2%.
For both.
For both Board of Ed and town.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass unanimously.
Get to item N4. Make a motion to approve the following property tax refunds as presented in the text.
Second?
Don, I'm trying to shuffle through all my agendas here. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve property tax refunds. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass unanimously. Do we have item five? We have item five here.
I'm sorry.
Get them item. To schedule a town council meeting on Tuesday, May 16th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. This is to set a town council meeting on Tuesday, May 16th at 7:00 PM. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
We're all looking.
No, we're just stalling because we don't want Johnny to be right.
It's one minute past. Done.
Okay, we have no executive session. Before we depart, I think our quote may be appropriate for this season. "You measure the size of accomplishments by the obstacles you have to overcome to reach your goals." Booker T. Washington.
I make a motion to adjourn the February 7th, 2023 town council meeting.
Second?
A motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 9:42.